Good morning. We'll call the December 2nd, 2014 County Commission meeting to order. We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection. Pledge of Allegiance led by Brian Mueller.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they wish to make to the agenda?
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Office Manager. I need to request that the Board move an executive session up before item number 18, please.
Do we have any other changes? Anyone? If there are no other changes, do we have a motion?
I'll move, Mr. Chair, to present the approved budget.
With the change?
Change of executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
None, other than I just got my tongue tied around my eye tooth and I couldn't see what I was saying.
Well, that's the way it happens sometimes. We do have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda.
All right. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of November 18th, 2014. Approval of the vouchers in the amount of $310,266.93. Approval of the Pennington County Code of Conduct. Number eight is approval of the alcohol beverage license renewals as presented by the Auditor's Office. Number nine is a motion to order the election for the determination of the organization of the Pine Meadows Court Road District to be held on January 19th, 2015 at 7:00 PM as presented by the Auditor. Number 10 is approval of the general fund budgeted operating transfer to the Road and Bridge Fund in the amount of $1,103,377.50 as presented by the Auditor's Office. Number 11 is to schedule a public hearing at 9:15 on December 16th, 2014 for the year-end general fund supplements for the election budget and the weed budget. Number 12 is to schedule a public hearing at 9:15 on December 16th, 2014 for year-end general fund budget supplements for the court-appointed attorney budget, the jail medical budget, planning budget, and the operating transfer out to fair fund budget. Number 13 is to schedule a public hearing on December 16th at 9:15 a.m. for a year-end debt service budget supplement for the fair fund debt service and the E-911 fund debt service budgets. Number 14 is to schedule a public hearing at 9:15 on December 16th, 2014 for the bond reissue supplements for the accumulated building debt service budget. Number 15 is to schedule a public hearing at 9:15 on December 16th, 2014 for the capital fund budget supplements, capital project fund budget supplements. Number 16 is to declare surplus six vehicles, including five Tahos and one Suburban, for the purpose of trade as part of the 2015 patrol vehicle replacement plan as submitted by the Sheriff's Office. And finally, number 17 is to authorize the Sheriff's Office to order six new Tahos and five Suburbans, or excuse me, five Explorers, as part of the 2015 patrol vehicle replacement plan, which was submitted by the Sheriff's Office.
Does anyone wish any of the consent items removed from the agenda? If not, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
Sure, if nobody else will.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
The Chair makes a motion to go into executive session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second to convene in executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Motion to come out of executive session.
Do we have a second?
Guess not, then we're back in.
Do we have a second for the motion to come out of the executive session? I'll second the motion to bring it to a vote. All in favor of adjourning executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is South Pitch Drive. And we have some folks here from the city to participate in this discussion. And where do we start? Who wants to speak first? Mark?
Mark Schock, Pennington County Highway. We kind of went over this two weeks ago, and I gave my presentation there. I guess I'm not prepared for a lot more here. We're discussing the snow removal in Big Sky subdivision, Valley Ridge subdivision in Rapid Valley. Holly, do we have a map, or where do I find that? Okay. We don't have it on the back today, but I guess this area, as discussed two weeks ago, is basically under no one's jurisdiction as far as road maintenance. My understanding, it's still in litigation between the city and the developer. We're talking about two different subdivisions. One being in the blue here is Big Sky subdivision. The yellow one is Valley Ridge subdivision, both developed by the same developer. In that area, we do have Tintin Lane Road District, which was formed in May 15th, 2007. The Big Sky subdivision did have a homeowners' association at one time. We, it was formed June 11th, 1998. There is, on our records, there is a letter dated October 24th, 2007, to the Big Sky Homeowners Association showing Pennington County map of snowplow routes and stating the Highway Department was directed by County Commission to plow snow on Avenue A. We don't have any documentation as to, as a resolution or anything of that sort. I think it was just a verbal that the county was going to plow Avenue A down in the bottom there. Just because our plows come up from the north on Dorothy Drive, DeGeese Drive, Pennington and Pennington Street, also Aurora in the center there, our plows turn around and leave a mess doing that. So it was agreed to us removing snow on that area on Avenue A. Now, as stated last week, or two weeks ago, we also have on record a letter dated March 24th, 2011, 11, informing the Public Works Director that the only service Pennington County provided in this area was snow removal after a major storm event. The homeowners' associations, in my understanding, is were dissolved in the Big Sky and also the Valley Ridge subdivision at some point. I don't know when that happened. So they're basically in no one's jurisdiction. The roads to the north of these subdivisions are in the city limits. The roads to the south are Pennington County maintained roads, also to the east. So they're in, basically, it's a donut hole that gets no maintenance from anyone except for the Tintin Road District. They did form their own road district, and they are maintaining that road, Tintin Lane and a small, I believe they do a small portion of South Pitch and Avenue A. I'm not sure about that, though. We are getting calls from this area, most snowstorm, most significant snow events. In the past, we have gone in there after all county roads, county-maintained roads are cleared. After a blizzard, we have opened those roads up for emergency vehicles, basically only poke a hole through so that the ambulance, the fire department, or whoever needs to get through there for an emergency purposes. I believe the city has done the same thing in the past a couple of times. But we receive requests for maintenance or snow removal, most snowstorms. There, about a month ago, it was not something we would call at the Highway Department, a major snow event, but the consistency of the snow, first it rained, then it snowed, and then we had the very sub-zero temperatures, created ice that was, I went out there and checked after numerous calls, there was probably ice an inch thick, inch and a half thick. Mr. Peterson called, he was getting calls from those people. We ended up going out there and sanding because there was reports of school buses sliding down the hill. As I stated two weeks ago, it's a very hilly terrain in this area. It does become very dangerous. They do need some maintenance. Where they're going to get that, or who should be doing that, I don't know. That's what we're here to discuss.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, yes.
You say you've received requests for snow removal, but frankly, you've also received requests to fill the holes out there and do something with the roller coaster roads through the years as well.
Yes, we do.
And do you know who formed that homeowners' association in 1998?
I do not. There is, our records are kind of brief. In the Highway Department, we don't deal with homeowners' associations. Road districts are a different matter. They're more modern, I guess I should say, as far as associations go, road maintenance goes. In the Valley Ridge subdivision, I do have a maintenance agreement on file that was signed by High Plains, which was the LLC. Mr. Doyle Estes signed it at the time. That said, they would, okay, there was other documentation that the city, this being in three-mile, three-mile platting jurisdiction, had control when these developments or subdivisions were built. They did require that the developer form a maintenance agreement on the Valley Ridge. I don't have anything on Big Sky, but on Valley Ridge subdivision before the final platting was approved. And in short, it says that the developer would maintain the roads, including snow removal, street sweepings, road repairs, until a homeowners' association or road district was formed. When a homeowners' association or road district is formed, the parties will execute a written revocation of this agreement. Whether that happened, I don't know. We do know that homeowners' associations were formed, whether the revocation to the agreement happened. And it also states, if High Plains fails to provide any of the above maintenance responsibilities, the city will be entitled to recover from High Plains all attorney fees, costs, and expenses incurred in enforcing this agreement. Now, keep in mind, this agreement we have on file at the Highway Department was signed by the developer. It does not have a signature from the mayor of the city. Whether that agreement was actually signed by the city, I'm not sure.
Any other questions for Mark? Does anyone from the city wish to address the Commissioner Terry, or someone?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
As the representative from the city is coming, you're with the city?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. As he's coming forward, I might just say, for the city's benefit, that I think I requested to have the mayor or somebody from the city come over to talk about this because the city has platted all of this ground, allowed the developers to go out there and develop, and then they approved the roads, they went and inspected the roads, the roads are a mess. They've been a mess for a number of years. And part of what we discussed two weeks ago is, if the city's going to plow this land, and they're working with a developer, plow it and approve it with the developer that it gets annexed, that, because then you're only dealing with one person. And I don't know why the city would not want to do that. So that's one of the questions I'd like to find out.
Introduce yourself, please.
Thank you, Chairman, and good morning. Terry Walters, Storff Public Works Director for Rapid City. And I've got several other representatives from Rapid City here, our Street Superintendent, Donnie Brumbaugh, city engineer, still here at Dale Tech, Joel Landine, our city attorney, and Jerry Wright, our council president, is here. So hopefully I can answer any of your questions regarding this particular subdivision. And really, I think there's two issues. One is this particular subdivision, and then maybe more of a general discussion on what happens with these subdivisions in the three-mile area. But specifically regarding Big Sky, here's where we're at today from a city standpoint. We're currently in litigation with the developer regarding the warranty repair work necessary on the streets. Obviously, we're all aware of the fact that a lot of these streets have pretty much fallen apart. So we're in that litigation. That's still going to take some time period before that all works its way through the system, I'm sure. And then the other issue is, we did have a neighborhood meeting out there this summer, it was, I think, tail end of July, maybe the first part of August when we had the meeting. Met with the property owners of the Big Sky subdivision, and we did offer an opportunity for us to do some funding and road repair contingent on annexation. Essentially, what we did is we allocated about $800,000 to repair the roads out there in Big Sky, the roads that are not in city limits, but they were going to be required to annex before we could spend that money. Obviously, we are not allowed to do road work, road maintenance work outside of city limits. So that happened in August. As of today, we've only received about 30% of the signatures we need to get to the 75% of the property owners to annex. So there doesn't seem to be a big driving desire out there for annexation. And short of that, from a city standpoint, it seems like we came to the table with the funding in place, with the ability to do the road repair, we simply needed the annexation. I will say that we have gone out and we've done the repair of the other roads in Big Sky that are in city limits. We completed that here this fall. So the stuff in city limits, we've taken care of. So really, at this point, we've kind of put it back in the property owner's hands to come forward with the petition of annexation.
Can you do a forced annexation?
The city could.
Right.
The city could. We have typically not taken that stance in most cases.
This is not a typical operation, though. I don't think, in a way. It's not a typical operation. Probably the reason you haven't got enough signatures, people volunteering to come in, is a lot of people are complacent. Hopefully, they won't be on the Civic Center project, but they're complacent with getting some of this stuff done. Whereas, I believe if the city went ahead and done the forced annexation on it out there, you'd probably have less of a uprising than what you're getting with the people that have signed the petitions. At least it get the problem solved.
And we have, you know...
Because I think this is a problem the city caused.
I don't know if I would agree that it's necessarily a problem the city caused from this standpoint. When we review plats in the three-mile area, we're reviewing to make sure that the infrastructure meets our city standards, so that if in the future they're annexed, we know they've been constructed according to our standards. Now, obviously, we're having some issues with warranty work and some substandard work that was done out there, but that's our reason for reviewing and approving those plats. Who maintains those roads? Look, if they're not annexed into the city, it falls into the property owners and the counties venue to do the ongoing maintenance on it. So to me, it's no different than those other roads out there in Rapid Valley. That would be my thought.
Good morning. I'm Joel Landine, the city attorney. I would just say, I think it's certainly a valid consideration that we should look at annexation, but one of the problems we have, Commissioner Holloway's question was, why don't we require annexation? Well, there's state law provisions for platting, and if the developer meets those provisions, approval of the plat becomes ministerial. We don't have any discretion. And I don't, at this point, annexation is not one of the requirements, so if they don't want to annex, I mean, I know that generally, there's a discussion about annexation if it's adjacent to the city. Obviously, not all of the subdivisions we review are adjacent to the city. I think for the ones, a subdivision like this that appears to be a residential city neighborhood that is adjacent to the city, certainly we should consider that. I'm more than willing to take a look at whether or not we can adopt a policy that requires annexation for platting. I mean, certainly, I know you gentlemen are all receiving calls, and your staff, well, we're receiving the same calls. So we have the same issues you have. We certainly recognize this as a problem. I think what happened, my recollection is that the idea was, there's agreements in place that the homeowners are supposed to annex, and the idea was always that they would voluntarily annex into the city at the time. They chose not to do that. The city hasn't had the inclination to go in and do a forced annexation. And we can certainly take that request back to the city council. I think the mayor and the city council initially wanted to see if we could get a voluntary annexation. I would have to think on streets like DeGeese Drive, the condition of the street is not helping those owners' property values, and that it would make sense for them to annex into the city if we were going to come out and repair their streets, which we've done the other streets. I think we've shown that we are willing to move forward, even though we haven't reached a settlement or gotten a judgment against the original developer for the deficiencies in the streets. But as Terry indicated, so far, they haven't really come forward to do that. I don't know how much more time we want to give the voluntary annexation. I think we've had discussions about giving it one more push to see if we can get the voluntary annexation. If we can't, then I think we should probably have a discussion about forced annexation, but ultimately, that will be up to the mayor and the city council, whether they want to proceed down that path. I will say, the discussions we've had have generally revolved around Big Sky and not really Valley Ridge subdivision. You know, the homeowners, I think for several years, Mr. Estes was providing at his own expense the snow removal and paying for the streetlights and those things. And the homeowners were supposed to either annex into the city or form a district to take care of it themselves. They never formed the district or did what they needed to do, and he eventually said, this has been five, six years, I'm done, and just stop doing it. And at that point, that's how we ended up, I think, where we're at today. So I think the annexation is a valid point. We are certainly in the Big Sky, at the very least, looking at trying to annex that and have money set aside to fix those streets if we can get it annexed. Quite frankly, the lawsuit, we're probably still several years from a resolution to that, and even if we do get judgment in our favor, you know, there's still always the problem of collecting on it. We have some of the contractors, one of the issues that we have in the lawsuit is that Mr. Estes sued the contractor on the area, essentially the area in blue you're looking at, and settled with that contractor for fairly low amount of money. And so now, there's no contractor for that provision. The other phases of Big Sky, we have contractors who are still on the hook, who have insurance companies, and I think they're willing to sit down and discuss possible resolution of the issues. But Mr. Estes is kind of standing alone on the area in blue and has not indicated a willingness to sit down at this point and discuss resolution of this matter. And that area you're looking at is probably the worst area out of the subdivision. So that's kind of where we're at.
Any questions?
Just one, if I could. Just so I understand, when a developer comes in, and you said there's provisions, and if they meet all these provisions, then they don't, and annexation isn't one of the provisions that they have to agree to. But if the developer wanted to agree to it prior to the developer trying to build in all the houses out there and getting, you know, a number of people involved in the annexation, he could do it early on?
He could.
And do you know, as a regular basis, does the city talk to the developer, was about saying, let's get you annexed before we move all these houses in there?
We do. The pushback we sometimes get is taxes.
Okay.
You know, we don't, this isn't like Denver, where we have somebody that's going to come and do 150 houses. They want to do a block or 10 houses at a time, and so they have, but may have a layout plat for 40 or 50 lots. Well, they don't want to annex those into the city and start paying taxes. And I know our planning director is going to actually municipal league right now and going to the state, and this is an issue in other communities, and talking about the tax structure and having it taxed on what it's currently being used for, rather than, you know, if it gets platted or it's shown as future residential, that it's getting taxed as residential in the city. I think, and again, when this subdivision was developed, none of the people sitting in the room here today were there when it was approved, so it's a little hard to talk about what exactly the discussion was. They clearly, from the agreements I've seen, although it's been a while since I looked at them, there was some contemplation that these would be annexed, but clearly, the developer at the time didn't want to annex them until after they were developed.
Thank you.
But it did create, it clearly created a problem, because then it became, as you said, now we have 60 people we have to deal with on annexation rather than one. So that's why I said, I think it's a valid discussion to have with the council about, should we be looking at annexation? And I think in the future, if this comes up, this is a lesson to point to and say, this is what can happen if you don't require annexation right now.
You know, and it might be, it might be something that the city may want to take a look at legislative-wise, so you could, so those developments that you're putting adjacent to your city limits, that you could make that one of the requirements. Because it seems like it would be, I mean, obviously, it would be the right thing to do, I would think. I mean, when the rest of Rapid Valley was developed, Rapid City was several miles away, you know, in the lower portions down here, the old Rapid Valley.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Shannon, evidently, I remember a legislative proposal, at least, that maybe never became law, that the inventory of a developer would not be assessed at the full price until it got developed. That's no longer, never was a law, or...
Good morning. I'm Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. You might be talking about a discretionary formula we have for rural subdivisions. When a developer develops a subdivision, the lots get a tax break before they're built on.
No, no, this was in their inventory. It was always the word, so evidently it didn't become...
That's one thing, but what Mr. Landine is talking about is the ability for a developer to look at a subdivision of 50 homes. And when he plans, he plans for all 50, and the streets and all the lots are designed. But when he brings it to the city, he brings it in chunks. He might say, these 10 homes, I want platted either in the city or out. uh, either in the city or, or out, however. But he only wants to do ten at a time because, uh, he, uh, he will pay taxes on those ten individual lots. Let's say those lots are worth fifty thousand dollars apiece, but the rest of that, uh, fifty, sixty acres will be one big chunk undeveloped. Now, he has plans to develop it, and we all know that, but.
Understand all that, understand all that. What the, what the, the proposed law was, was those other forty lots would, even though they get annexed, wouldn't be taxed that way. They would be in his inventory and would be taxed the same as if they weren't annexed. So, I take it that never passed.
I, I'm not familiar with that, so I, I don't know.
Okay. Anything further?
Just one quick comment, ju- just to clarify that. Our discussions with the homeowners out there this summer, just, just so everybody's clear, we were not discussing the entire Big Sky subdivision. Um, we were discussing the areas that had the extremely deteriorated roads. So, my recollection was, um, the lots that front on Carl Ave- Carl Avenue's in pretty good shape, if I remember right. Um, I don't think those were included in our, in our voluntary annexation that we were pursuing. Uh, just wanted to clarify that. And my next question would be, if, if you wanted the city to look at a forced annexation, are we talking Big Sky? Are we talking Valley Ridge? And if we're talking Valley Ridge, do you include the Tintin Lane Road District area? Is it the entire area?
Well, I think that's a discussion for a future date, after we see what happens with voluntary annexation. Obviously, right now, our focus has tended to be Big Sky, but I mean, hadn't really had Valley Ridge on the radar.
From, from a road maintenance standpoint, snow removal standpoint, I mean, that voluntary annexation is not going to remove all of the issues you guys are, are hearing.
This is somewhat off the direct topic, but, um, I saw some plans for De Geese Drive. Were they from the Pennington County Highway Department as far as a rebuild? And I'm curious, Tom, do you want to?
Our plans, Tom Wills, the Highway Department, uh, our plans for De Geese rebuild is from south of it, this, uh, Big Sky development down to, um.
Twelvet.
Well, it starts at this development going south. We're not doing the part up north.
I'm not with you, I guess.
I was just. I am this portion in here.
Oh, okay. I, I misunderstood that.
From that portion going south is what we're looking at.
When I was looking at the blue arm that sticks up there.
When are you looking at doing a rebuild on that?
If we can get the right of way and easements, we're looking at next summer.
Next summer. Oh, that might be some more, um, ammunition for the city because if, if those people in that little army going up on De Geese think they got it bad now, wait until the county redoes the lower portion, then it's really going to stand out.
Yeah.
I mean, to a certain extent, I agree with you. The city or their residents out there need to do something, but you know how complacent some people can be and.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
And, and part of, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place because the reason some of them are complacent is is when they call, the county runs out and does it, the work for it.
True.
And, and you'll, you'll never get them to annex involuntarily as long as the county continues to do work for them. Why would, why would you?
Okay. Does anyone wish to make a motion? Tom, did you have something?
I was going to say, my comment to that is, we have not gone up and done repair work on the roads up there because we've been waiting for directions.
But you do the snow removal?
During very severe events, yes.
Which is safety wise, we understand.
Yes.
Is it appropriate that we make a motion urging the city to complete annexation of that area with or without voluntary?
That would be my motion, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Go ahead.
Can you clarify which area?
Which area?
Yeah.
Well, I'd encourage you to take it all, but I guess you guys are going to have to figure out how, how much of a, how, how much of a bite you want to take. I, I think taking it all would be the appropriate thing so that those people can get the services that obviously they, they need. Uh, but.
Is that the intent of your motion?
Yeah. That would be the intent of my motion, but obviously, it's just a suggestion on our part, uh, for you to go forward.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and a clarification. Any further discussion? Thank you, Terry and Joe. There's no more discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I might just remind the city folks that are here, if they still, if you've got a little time, the next two items are going to pertain a lot to the city that are on this agenda, um, to our entire Black Hills area.
Yes.
One, one of the things that brought this to light, though, was the discussion about, what do we want to do in the future? And I think the Highway Department was looking for some direction from us. What, what should we do when the next snowstorm comes? Should we be out there plowing those streets or not? And, and we kind of got off into the annexation aspect of it, but we never did answer your question yet, did we, Tom?
No, you did not.
Would you like an answer?
That's what my question was going to be. Until this is annexed, should we put together an agreement that we will plow it after? Well, I've got some language here. Give it to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Tom, while you're doing that, did you ever find back into the minutes where this original proposal was made?
We were not able to find the original minutes where this proposal was made. What I am suggesting is, uh, Pennington County can, will remove snow from the roads within the Big Sky development and Valley Ridge development following any major storm. I'm basically copying what they had before, following major storm events, and snow removal will commence in this region when, when the county roads are cleaned, are plowed. And I also put in language that superintendent shall have the authority to dispatch trucks otherwise when there's severe safety hazard within this development, as we had with the ice storm. Um, and basically, this agreement would continue until it's annexed or they, they'd form a homeowners association, which I know won't happen.
Well, and, and what, what this does is, as, as Ron pointed out, um, it kind of takes away some of the incentive of that group out there, those people that live out there, to deal with their, with their issue. Because now, somebody's coming in and bailing them out, they've got no, they've got no, uh, skin in the game.
Thing is, this won't get done right away. It won't get done right away. We are going to take care of our roads first.
Well, but it, they, it still eventually gets done for them at no cost to them and no, no commitment on their part to take care of the long-term problems. I, I'm wondering, do we have anybody here from Big Sky or Valley Ridge subdivision?
Apparently not.
Apparently not.
Well, Mr. Chairman, what, what I would ask is, uh, when you get done with all the county work and you get done with this work, would you come up to my house in the city and do mine next? Because I don't get it done any other.
I'd like them to come do mine, too.
I, I'm not sure that we ought to approve this. I, I'm, I'm wondering if we don't put it off for two weeks and, and somehow or another, and I, because there's no organization out there, I don't know how you get the word out in, in the Big Sky, uh, Valley Ridge subdivisions. But, uh, it'd be nice if somebody from that group out there came forward and would speak and say, we like our bumpy roads and no snow removal, and we don't want to do anything, or we would like to get it resolved. And if they want to get it resolved, then talk about a long-term solution to this problem. Because we, you know, for the four years that I've been on this commission, we've been talking about Big Sky subdivision.
At the same time, I think, uh, we need to recognize that putting the department in a position of, uh, inconsistent guidance, uh, creates a difficult situation for them.
I, I would propose also that if, if the board would wish, um, we would do it on an on-call basis, as per the board's approval, if you give me one of you to contact, to get your approval. Uh, that's ice storm we had a month ago, it was dangerous. And I, my whole job is public safety, and I feel very strongly about that.
Mr. Chair, I, I'm going to respond to that, though, Tom. My streets were that way, too, and I didn't have anybody coming in and, and, and rescuing me. So, I, I'm struggling with this. And, and I know that we've talked that we aren't sure that there is an active homeowners association, but, um, I've had family who lived there within the last two years on De Geese, north of Avenue A, and there was a homeowners association at that time. So, it has to be a fairly recent thing that they are no longer active. And I'm, I'm just, I, I, I want people to be safe, but we, the way that that was annexed out there without annexing the roads is something that was not appropriately done, and we didn't do it. And, um, I mean, they were the ones who were in control. The city was in control of those streets and how they were built. Um, and, and now, we're going to take care of the problem, but it's a city problem. And I think that if, uh, if the homeowners out there recognize it's a city problem, then they are going to start doing something to work with the city instead of just complacently sitting there.
So, what's your wish as the commission?
Mr. Chair, um, I, I believe that, that the, the city has the, um, has the problem, and we're bailing them out. And I, I'm really not thinking that you should go onto city streets and, and remove the snow. And there's a technical thing there. They say, well, it's not the city street, but they annex the property on either side.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I guess we'll soon find out whose responsibility it is. About the time we have somebody injured in an accident out there. So, I don't know that we need to do something ahead of time or let it happen. But, um, I have a little problem with letting public safety just happen.
So, I could do it on my street, too, Ken. I could have an accident on my street that was not maintained by the city.
Yeah. Okay, we need to move forward. So, does anyone have a motion relative to this item?
Well, I, I, maybe I, we've got some staff out here. Is there any way we could notify? Is there a notification process that we could go through to notify these people that live in those, uh, districts?
We could come up with something, yes.
Because that's what I'd like to see, I guess. I'd like to see some of those individuals come forward and, and start accepting some responsibility on this. And if, maybe they don't want us to do anything. And if they don't want us to do anything, then I guess our problem's resolved. But, uh.
What specifically are you thinking you want it to say? Do you want us to invite them to the next county commission meeting?
Right. Invite them to the next county commission meeting and, and so that we can discuss annexation of these areas, road maintenance in these areas, um, and, and snow removal.
Are you making a motion?
Since you spoke, now I can make the motion, right?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we postpone this for two weeks and, and attempt to contact the residents in these areas to come to our next commission meeting to discuss annexation, road maintenance, snow removal. Um, and, and part of my motion would be that the Highway Department, if there's a snowstorm in the next two weeks, uh, just take care of the county roads and leave these alone.
Second, we, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Next item is payslaw, and, um, I would inform you that we had a brief meeting yesterday that reviewed some of the paperwork that's in your packets. And all of these things are strictly examples, excuse me.
Sir, I, I apologize. Uh, our staff had to leave. They're not able to attend what Ken asked about. We had a teleconference with the D and R on some water issues, so they're gone. And I have to go to a service. We'll be gone, but I'll ask the mayor to, uh, talk to your office about it, maybe having someone here in two weeks when you're back on this discussion, okay?
Thanks. Thank you. Okay, going back to item nineteen, the, some of the draft papers are not all, I think they're labeled as drafts, but, um, essentially, in our meeting yesterday, we explored some of the, uh, issues that were identified in the early communication. And, um, I think we still have a plan to meet, what, in a couple of weeks?
Yes.
With the idea that the players involved, uh, law enforcement, fire people, all that, will be set at the table and work forward. But, um, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Van Norman. I'm here on behalf of the Shakopee Sioux Tribe. Um, we are working together with Rosebud, Crow Creek, and Standing Rock to, uh, reacquire payslaw. Uh, I think we discussed it last time. Uh, Mr. Herman E. Horse is not with us today because they're, they're swearing in down at the Oklaho Sioux Tribe. But the Black Hills are sacred to the Lakota, and payslaw is a very sacred site to the Lakota and Dakota. We intend to preserve payslaw in its natural state as a sacred site, reintroduce buffalo. It's about two thousand twenty acres, uh, twenty miles west of Hill City, two miles north of Deerfield Lake, Rochford Road, and Slate Prairie Road. Run through it. Uh, we're interested in doing mutual aid law enforcement agreements so we can take care of traffic safety and other law enforcement issues that might come up, and doing some kind of reimbursable, uh, agreement on, uh, fire and ambulance. Um, we're, we're looking to use it for reintroduction of buffalo, hay, wood. So, it's really agricultural in nature. And, uh, I think based on that, your tax revenue would be low. Naturally, when it goes into trust, uh, those taxes are no longer applicable under federal law. But we'd like to work with, uh, your staff, you know, for the next sixty to ninety days or so and see what we can do with the agreements. And hopefully, at the end of the process, you know, have agreements that you're comfortable with, that you can support, uh, our acquisition of the land for a sacred site. Uh, today, we brought with us Lisa Colom from the Intertribal Bison Cooperative, uh, to discuss our plans to reintroduce the buffalo. And, uh, we're looking to move forward with that and put in some stronger fence and bring the buffalo up shortly. We're probably looking at about eighty head. So, Lisa, did you want to come up for a second?
Hello. Thank you for having me here today. I'm honored to be here. Um, I have a handout that I'll give you here just in a, in a brief moment. Um, but just to note that Intertribal Buffalo Council has been in effect here in the Black Hills area since nineteen ninety-one. We were formed by the same tribes, as well as fifty-some others, to preserve and resor- buffalo back on native homelands. We have been working with the Shakopee Tribe, I'm also a Rosebud Sioux tribal member, so this has been of utmost priority for me at Inner Tribal Buffalo Council. I am the technical service director and so with that, I am the sole person, I guess, that handles all the surplus animals that come out of the national parks as well as the National Wildlife Refuges and some of our state parks. And my job is to place those buffalo with the appropriate tribes in pastures. So, this fiscal year, since last summer, June and July, we began our plans to put in a request for surplus buffalo in which I have held 87 head of buffalo on the Rosebud Sioux Reservation in preparation to put out at payslaw. I drafted a formal lease agreement that my supervisor, Jim Stone at ITBC, is currently reviewing for a final lease to run on shares with these animals. This will go in front of Inner Tribal Buffalo Council's formal board next week out in Las Vegas at our membership meeting in which all of our tribes will be present. So, I'll hand this out to you and then if you have any questions for me, I can take those at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa, would you comment, I'm sure you do this, in terms of the livestock sanitary board and disease prevention and so on, would you comment about your program in that regard?
Absolutely, sir. I know that brucellosis has kind of been given a bad ugly name and been attached to buffalo, but the bison that these 87 head come from the herds are completely brucellosis-free. They come from all areas that have never had a case of brucellosis. Every one of these animals was tested for TRIC, brucellosis, STDs, and gotten a clearance and I have all the vet records for that from the national parks. As well as the national parks and the National Wildlife Refuges have a very rigorous health program and so I actually have every animal chipped. So, when you wand the animal, it gives you a readout of every single time they've been worked throughout their lives. We haven't vaccinated for anything except for anthrax. There was a small breakout of anthrax along the Missouri River this year so we made sure for $60 a head that we had all the buffalo, we ran through the shoot anthrax vaccinated. But, outside of that, all the animals are deemed to be healthy and disease-free. They will also go through another round of testing with our state vet, Dusty Odakoven has been really involved with most of the shipments within our state. We work closely with all of the state vets, so...
Thank you. Any other questions for Lisa?
So, you think that it'll be within a month or so or they'll be up there or what do you?
As soon as I get the final approval on the lease on December 9th from the board, I have truckers in Mission, South Dakota that are on standby and also some fencing efforts even this week. We're gonna go out to the site again on Thursday and I'm gonna do the final calculations for our materials.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, and with your indulgence, I was gonna ask my colleague Kurt Budog to come up and say a few words. Kurt?
Thanks, Mark. Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Commissioners, Pennington County, we appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you today. I'm going to be brief, I'm, we don't have a whole lot actually to report, we're here to do an update, so to speak. We did speak to you, I think, about two months or so ago. But, we're very much interested in establishing and maintaining and promoting dialogues with the county board and the various staff and programs within the Pennington County Board as well as the city and Hill City in particular, it seems, in terms of working through some arrangements that could bring a comfort level to all parties involved. As Mark, I think Mark mentioned that we did submit, as we indicated that we would when we were last here, we did submit, in fact, primarily from my office on behalf of the four involved tribes. And my regular job is I'm a general counsel to the Shakopee Tribe in Minnesota and the Twin Cities and I have been for 22 years. Shakopee is a very well-off tribe, so they're very generous, they've assisted and promoted all of the nine tribes, all the nine Sioux tribes here in South Dakota. I'm from the Twin Cities but I'm originally from South Dakota and my wife is likewise originally from South Dakota. Let me see, what else was I gonna say? So, we did submit and Mark will introduce the regional director from the Department of Interior, Bureau of Indian Affairs out of Aberdeen and he's got some staff folks with him and I think, so we submitted to him, he actually is a representative. There's federal law in place, of course, Congress passed legislation back in 1934, law called the Indian Reorganization Act, which did several things, primarily dealt with putting in place a mechanism for government within the federally recognized Indian tribes. But, among other things, it provided a mechanism authorizing the Secretary of Interior to take land in trust at his discretion on behalf of Indians and Indian tribes. And within that structure, that statute, that federal law, regulations have been developed and reworked over the years in Code of Federal Regulations, 25 Code of Federal Regulations, Part 151, which lists the requirements that he needs to look at. The Interior Department then delegates that down to the regional offices and Mr. LaPointe here is the director, acting director of the regional office in Aberdeen and this area falls within that region. So, I think he would like to just introduce himself and tell, let you know what process he follows. But, we did submit it, I think it was about two weeks ago on behalf, primarily from my office on behalf of the four tribes. We're really not doing anything with it, in fact, we may just ask the regional director to sit on it for now while we can have an opportunity to work with you folks. And as the Chairman Peterson indicated, Mr. Peterson indicated that we are coming back in two weeks to work with staffers. We drafted these documents and it says draft all over them, as Chairman Peterson indicates, those are totally draft, they've not been approved by the tribes as well. But, what I meant to do, what we meant to do is for that to be a starting point of hopefully finding some common ground. And in the meantime, establishing some lines of communication here in the county and the other Hill City and the city and whoever, frankly, we need some help from your staff because this is, this is a unique situation. And Mark Van Norman and I are very experienced attorneys, but we've never dealt with this before. So, we're kind of feeling our way through and it's really a matter of intergovernmental cooperation and assistance and learning experience, I guess. And talking to some of your staff, we've had some really good suggestions from some folks yesterday and even this morning. So, we're optimistic that, you know, that we can come to some agreements here that hopefully you folks will feel comfortable and, you know, hopefully supporting and recommendation to the regional director to take our payslaw property into trust status. But, we know there's a lot of details to work through to reach that result and that's what we're, Mark and I are kind of the worker bees, I guess, kind of heading this up and trying to get this done. But, that's what we're doing today, so we wanted to update the Board of Commissioners. Let me see, I think, I think that's everything I wanted to say. Any questions, Mr. Chairman or Commissioners, or me? And if not, I'm gonna turn it back over to Mark but I'm happy to respond to any questions he might have.
Any questions?
And just, just one, you know, once you, once you get this fenced and the buffalo in there and, and I've read over some of your material where this is sacred, sacred ground for the Indian people, are you gonna restrict non-Indians from going onto the land?
Well, you know, I don't think we've ever faced that question before. I can't imagine they'd be prohibited or, I don't know of any ordinances in any of the four involved tribes that prohibits non-Indians from entering the Crow Creek, Rosebud, Standing Rock, what's the other, oh, Shakopee, I guess, tribes. In fact, actually, there's probably more non-Indians than Indians on some of those reservations, so. We've not discussed that and right now, I, you know, I don't have the final word on that but I can't imagine that that would be the case.
But, we could, we could say this, you have county rights away there and your county rights away would be maintained.
Sure.
And certainly the thoroughfares, they're be open to the same extent they are now. So, there's no question about that. Right now, you know, for years, while the Reynolds owned it, they had it fenced for cows and, you know, kept the pastures closed to keep their cows in. And I don't know that there were a lot of folks that went up there. Behind payslaw, sort of to the west, is Flag Mountain and there's a road that goes up there that has kind of a, kind of a overlook. I didn't see any no trespassing signs or anything up there. But, you know, we expect people might still, you know, go up there and enjoy the scenic area.
And I don't know what the Reynolds did as far as allowing hunting, any hunting on their area when they had it and, so I don't, I don't know if you guys would restrict hunting and if the South Dakota deer, you know, game fishing parks, would they have jurisdiction for deer license and things like that on that area?
Well, I think, I think once it were taken in a trust, the tribes would, would have jurisdiction and I'm not sure you'd want hunters out there in proximity to the buffalo because it might be a danger to people to do that. So, I think we're looking, is that true? Yeah, I think, I think they're somewhat dangerous if they all get together and they raise their tails. Did you want to say something? Go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, one of the most efficient ways of managing a wild buffalo herd that's completely out on grass and never been in a corral other than a few days is a hunt. And so, we do expect there being a few buffalo hunts per year but they would be very well organized and I think that, you know, our attorneys, attorneys could definitely work out the logistics on who has tags and whatnot for it.
Okay, all right, so, so, I, you know, maybe under, we haven't really crossed that bridge yet but under some limited scenario, maybe. And we did want to invite the BIA to come, they're, they're obviously important partners in, in managing the land once it's taken in trust, so. Tim, if you want to come up, this is Tim LaPointe, he's the regional director for Great Plains. Ranger?
Hi, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. I think, I did bring some staff, I wanted to introduce Mario Redleg, Special Agent in Charge for the Office of Justice Services, Lan Beert, Superintendent at Rosebud, and Carla Clark, Acting Realty Officer at our office in Aberdeen. But, I think the important thing for me to convey today is that we want to make sure that everybody's clear on the process, the application will be submitted to the regional office and when we get a complete application, we'll be, we'll consult with the county, the state, any other local governments that might be applicable and ask for comments. And during this process, I also want to make it very clear that we are committed to bringing our resources to the table and hopefully addressing and working through any issues that, that may be involved jurisdictional, those type of things. So, I know it's very preliminary at this point but if you have any questions, I'm certainly willing to do my best to answer.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, and as I read through this, I have lots of questions. And I guess I'm curious in hearing what you just said, whether it's better to address those questions before it goes to your office for review or is it better to try to have some of them solved so that when you get the application, you, you know that it's been solved? I mean, I'm trying to understand that part of the process.
Well, there will be a 30-day comment period and, you know, we haven't even consulted at this point. So, I think that it's, we found in the past that it's probably better to address all the issues as soon as possible because it would be very hard for us to make a positive determination if there are outstanding issues. And so, whenever that those issues can be addressed before we make a determination, to me, it's always, the quicker you do that, the better.
Okay. So, what is that process then for addressing those? We go, you're made aware of them or we deal at this level or?
Well, a lot of those, the process will be worked out between the four tribes and all the other interested parties, county. So, and then that information will be submitted to us, we will evaluate and make a determination on whether to accept the land into trust or not.
I think it's important that we continue a dialogue that provides the opportunity for issues to be thought of or recognized and dealt with and that, that might be an ongoing process. Sometimes one thought stimulates another and at this point, I think we're moving along fairly well.
So, how my questions are presented to whom?
To Holly.
Start out now today if you want.
To Holly.
Well, I guess I'm just, kind of some practical things, you know, what if on the property, there are some issues? We have a lot of, and what I'm thinking about is weed, weed control and that sort of thing because we have a lot of trouble with Canadian thistle up here. How does that work on trust land? Is there any cooperative efforts?
Well, we could, we could certainly talk about, you know, a cooperative effort and we'd be in touch with the Forest Service also because they'll be neighboring a property on three sides. So, we'd want to have, you know, an ongoing dialogue. I don't know if for the weed control, it's necessary to be real formal about it but, you know, we'd like to...
Well, there are state laws and so on that, that we must, and we actually do have contracts with the Forest Service, so the county is involved in that sort of thing and...
Yeah.
And I'm just curious how you handle those types of things.
We could take a look at it, it's our intention to try and promote natural plants, native species and kind of returning...
It's not native.
That's, I understand that you're saying it's invasive species.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'd be interested in controlling invasive species and eradicating them to the extent that you can.
There's a lot of collaborative efforts that happen within our area and, and one of them has been the mountain pine beetle. How do you, who, who would you go to if there was some kind of collaborative effort that needed to happen to make everything better, not just a piece of property? How, how do you handle that after the trust is established?
Well, you know, certainly we're happy to have an ongoing dialogue with, you know, the local government and county government, but naturally, we would be in touch with the Forest Service and there's a possibility for the tribes to contract with the Forest Service to do, you know, kind of a healthy forest program which would involve efforts to try and control the pine beetles.
Currently, there is a collaborative effort that involves all of the counties, two states, the Forest Service, the state forestry. I mean, you would, my purpose in asking that is that it's important that you would be involved with our collaborative effort and I wanted to know because we're kind of spreading out authorities of different kinds for different types of purposes. I find that a little confusing and who, who would you go to to develop that? And I'm asking those questions because I want them to be considered now.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not saying right or wrong or anything, I'm just asking those questions because I think it's important for us to do that now, according to what you're saying.
We, we agree with you and we'll take that in consideration as we go forward with our meetings. We, we are already in touch with the Forest Service so we're happy to be in touch with, you know, all of our, all of our neighbors and we'll be continuing dialogue with the BIA.
Okay, all right. So, and another thing, you have an agreement with Rapid Sea to provide emergency services and fire services.
Should be Hill City.
I was wondering why it would be Rapid Sea.
Sorry, it should be Hill City.
Those are my calls.
Oh, okay, so then I'm good with that question. I don't know. I guess maybe what I would like to do is just come to those meetings.
They're open, certainly.
Okay.
Great. Well, we appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate your time, and we'll look forward to working with your folks, and we would like to be good neighbors and resolve any questions, you know, as we go forward. So, and I should mention that, that, uh, the Reynolds came to us as we were working on this process, and they said to us, "Well, we sold you the rest of the area. We were going to hold the homesteads." So, they sold us the homestead area, which is kind of the open area above there, I think. And we just recently closed on that with them, uh, yesterday. And so, that has a, that has a house on it, and we would use that house as the caretaker house for the buffalo. So, thanks very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I don't think we need a motion on this, do we? But I'm sure it would encourage our staff and whoever is interested to work with these gentlemen and see if we can work out all the bugs.
Good.
Thank you.
Does anyone from the audience have any questions or comments? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is item twenty, Keystone XL Pipeline Project.
While you're waiting there, Mark, thanks for coming. I, I appreciate it.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, thanks for inviting us. Um, I guess I can start while she's working on this. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you guys a little bit. Uh, feels like coming home for me again, kind of. In case, uh, some of you don't recognize me, my name is Mark Johnson. I'm a former county commissioner from Yankton, South Dakota. I served as a commissioner there for approximately nine years. Uh, about a year ago, I came to work for TransCanada Pipelines on the Keystone XL Project. Uh, my intent here today is to just give you a brief, uh, update on where we're at on the project and hopefully answer any questions that you may have. A couple of weeks ago, uh, Ken attended a meeting that we had to discuss any, uh, any questions that people hear throughout this area. And hopefully, we answered those questions for Ken, and hopefully, I can give you an update. Currently, as the project sits, as you may or may not know, our project is a thirty-six-inch, uh, steel pipeline, buried four feet below the ground, that will transport approximately eight hundred forty thousand barrels of oil per day. That's crude oil that comes from both, uh, Canada in Alberta, as well as, uh, oil from the Bakken. We're contracted for approximately a hundred barrels per day that comes directly out of the Bakken. Currently, in South Dakota and Montana, uh, we have all of our easements in place in both South Dakota and Montana. In Nebraska, we have approximately eighty-four percent of our easements in place. In Nebraska, we're awaiting a decision by the Nebraska Supreme Court. In early December, uh, that case was argued in front of the Supreme Court to determine if a legislative bill that had passed recently was in fact constitutional. Uh, the case was heard in September, and we have, uh, we are expecting actually a decision any time. Uh, the reason for that case, since I'm based in Nebraska right now, I'm familiar with that case. It has to do with Legislative Bill eleven sixty-one that was passed in Nebraska pri, or during the initial planning of this project. If you're interested, I'll, I'll fill you in quick. That was, um, prior to that case, any interstate pipeline did not have a formal permitting process in Nebraska. When we built the first pipeline, the Keystone Pipeline, along the eastern side of the state, uh, we went through, and they really didn't have a formal process. They came back, um, created a formal process, but since we were already partially way through, we were given some exceptions. And then they went and changed the rules. Uh, and what the case is about is, do we have to follow those rules that were passed afterwards? Or do we follow the process that was laid out at the beginning for us? When we hear about that, we will know whether we do follow those rules that we initially heard, or if we have to follow rules, uh, which would, um, basically be, we follow the PSC process, which is a process similar to South Dakota's PUC process. Uh, currently in South Dakota, uh, we are going through the renewal process for the, um, PUC permit. That was submitted, uh, about a month ago. We expect the announcement, uh, of further requirements, what exactly that process will entail, uh, about December eighth. Uh, we will know then if we're going to have public hearings, what those hearings will look like. And, uh, we will make sure and update you and let you know what, you know, what will be required. We are, if we do have to have public meetings, we will assume it will probably be similar to what they did the first time when we initially got the permit, which would, uh, put about, I believe there were four public hearings at that time. And some of you may have attended those as well. Uh, the other thing that we are waiting on currently is a decision by the President to sign the presidential permit. That permit allows us to cross the U.S.-Canadian border with the pipeline. That, as you know, has been reviewed. Um, it's actually been under review for six years. There have been five separate studies. All have come to the same conclusion, um, which we believe indicates that we should have a permit. However, the President has not signed it. We've seen indications from DC that says, um, that we will be having some votes by the Senate, um, to override the President, and to, and they believe that they may be able to override a veto if that were the case, um, sometime next year. Once we do have those permits in place, uh, we would begin construction, and construction would take approximately eighteen months. You in Pennington County, as you can see by the map, we catch, it's actually eight tenths of a mile that crosses your county. So, you really don't get a lot of direct tax benefit from, um, in the long term. However, uh, I do anticipate that your county and Rapid City in the Hills area will see an economic benefit from the pipeline workers. Uh, when they do have weekends, time off, they're of course going to enjoy the Black Hills like the rest of us do. I'm open to any questions. Um, anything you may have for questions, I will answer to the best of my ability, and if I can't, I'll find the people that can.
Thank you, Mark. Um, any questions for Mark?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mark, would you just, uh, give us a quick update on the, on the labor camps that are going to be set up across the state? Approximately how many employees will be in each one and where they're at?
There, there's going to be, uh, I believe there's three labor camps in, in South Dakota. Uh, those labor camps, it will vary, uh, the number of, uh, employees at those camps at one time. Uh, I was in, I was in, uh, Buffalo last night, and we talked about the labor camp up there. That may hold up to fifteen hundred people at one time. However, it'll average closer to six hundred people. Uh, those people will come in, they will work on the pipeline, and those camps are s, set up so that there's essentially what we call two spreads, two construction areas that they will be able to work in. So, they will be there for approximately three months at a time in each of those camps as they move through. And that's pretty consistent for the rest of the camps as well. They've gone through permitting processes, uh, for all of the camps, so they should be all ready to go with permits. We hold, um, they have their own medical staff on duty. They will have their own security on duty. And they're very, I mean, I mean, they're good camps. The camps also have, uh, like I said, it's twenty-four-hour security, and they include a campground-type area, because some of the people do travel in mobile homes and things like that, camper-type trailers. So, it's, you do get a good mix, and in those, uh, worker camps, some of the wives do travel with their husbands or husbands with wives that work, whichever the case may be. So, you do get some, uh, some wives, typically what we saw in Yankton. As I was a commissioner in Yankton County, when the pipeline went through, we saw the wives that were, um, stayed back in town while their husbands were working all day, and they did a lot of great projects within our community. So, for these smaller communities where we do bring in work camps, I think they're going to see some great benefits. Um, and, you know, the ladies may come shopping or whatever the case may be into Rapid City. So, there will be economic benefit.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Um, Mark, could you kind of give the commission an update on approximate, like Harding County, what they may receive for property taxes and...
Harding County stands to receive, between Harding and Tripp Counties, those both receive huge amounts of, uh, tax revenues. Uh, it essentially will more than double, uh, the tax revenues, the taxable, uh, value in their properties throughout the year. So, that's, that's a huge increase. I believe, South Dakota, I was reading through the overall tax benefit that the state of South Dakota, well, the counties within the state, stand to gain from this project is approximately twenty million dollars. Um, so, we do have a significant investment throughout this, not only the taxes, but also when we're using, using a lot of electricity, uh, these pump stations that we have that are spaced about every fifty miles. Uh, those pump stations use a substantial amount of electricity, and since we all have, out in this area, we have rural electric for the most part. We, in a lot of cases, more than double the capacity of what the current grid can handle. So, it gets upgraded to handle the electricity consumption for our project, um, at our cost. And then in the long run, that will lower costs, because of course, you know, it takes out that peak need. Uh, so, it's a significant increase. The other item that, uh, I know, uh, Senator Rounds, I'm always used to saying Governor Rounds yet, but it's Senator Rounds now.
Good luck.
He, uh, he indicated that when this pipeline is built, it will help to take off, um, a lot of the load off of the rail that we have issue with, especially with grain, uh, getting on the rail because of all the crude oil usage. And, uh, the quote I heard was actually, I believe, incorrect, because this pipeline will actually take, at eight hundred forty thousand barrels of oil per day, that's roughly ten unit trains per day that it takes off the rail, which to me is a staggering number, and even more so when you look at the fact that those full rail cars that go one direction, loaded with crude oil, have to come back empty. So, that's really twenty trains per day. That's twenty-two hundred cars a day that it'll take off the rail, which is significant and should help, uh, should definitely help the, uh, the agriculture in this area.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just a couple of questions. You had mentioned eighteen months of construction. Is that just the portion that's going through South Dakota, or is that the whole project?
That'll be overall, it's, it'll actually be a total of about twenty-four months. The pipeline itself will be about eighteen months, and that's the overall project. Um, we do have a plan, um, that we're going to try, depending on how things work out, to try and push it through quicker. But we do have several crews that will be available, um, from different companies that we'll bring in, uh, to do the work. It is, uh, they move pretty quickly. They can go through about a mile a day of laying pipe. So, it's, it's very quick. It's actually, I, it was fascinating, and I came, I worked for an engineering firm, uh, as well, when, while I was in Yankton. And, uh, so I was used to seeing construction projects, but I was really amazed at how these guys came in. They clear the entire right-of-way, which really helps, uh, especially in this area, where in the summertime you do have, you know, chances of drought quite often, and, and a lot of fire danger potentially throughout that right-of-way. Well, what happens is they strip the top soil completely off, so you have all the vegetation and everything off of the top soil. And then they dig their trench, and they put the, um, waste, the spoils on the other side. And then everything gets done within that center trench, where you've got basically an earthen berm on either side of this trench. So, your risk of fire goes way down, which is a very, uh, significant, I think, in this area. Um, and once it's done, they bring the top soil back on top of everything and plant the grasses. And the contracts that they have with the landowners specify that they have to return it to either the native grasses, if it's grazing land, or, uh, if the rancher determines that he would like another type of grass, they work that out within federal laws and how all that works. So, the, the right-of-way is all returned, um, just the way it was before. And from what I've seen, uh, what I saw when they went through Yankton, and what I see on a daily basis throughout Nebraska, is it's done very well. If it's crop ground, you can't tell where it went through, you know, within two years. And, uh, grazing land does take a little while longer to recover, but within a few years, uh, you can virtually not tell where the pipeline is.
And the other question that I had is, is, um, is this the original route that you had going across South Dakota?
This is clo, this is the original route in South Dakota, yes. We changed the route in Nebraska uh, because of concerns going through the Sandhill region. Uh, so, we did move it out of the Sandhill region and looped around it. But this is the route that we had initially chosen.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Do, Mark, and I don't, this is kind of a, uh, question that's been in my mind, and I heard the number a long, long time ago, but do you know how many miles of underground pipeline are in the United States right now?
It's a staggering amount. I, I cannot think, because I know I've been working in Nebraska, and I know Nebraska has twenty-five thousand miles itself.
Seems to me it was four hundred and eighty thousand miles or something of underground pipeline in this country.
If you go to, uh, the U.S. Pipeline Maps, you can look at it, and especially once you get south of Nebraska, it is just solid pipelines everywhere. Uh, pipelines have been used to transport hazardous chemicals for years. Um, they transport over, over aquifers, right through aquifers, and, and with very few problems. Uh, we've had, the pipeline that we built four years ago, the Keystone Baseline, that goes through the eastern part of South Dakota, that pipeline has had virtually no problems, is a great, um, been transporting a lot of oil. Um, that one transports about five hundred and eighty-five thousand barrels a day through that one, which is significant. These are very much, uh, needed pipelines. Uh, the U.S. is currently using approximately, uh, sixteen million barrels per day. And of that sixteen million, we are importing right around, I believe the number, it varies, but it's right around eight million barrels a day that we import from other countries. Um, Venezuela is a big, we import a lot from Venezuela, as well as Saudi Arabia and all the other countries. So, it's just, it's a good way to ensure that we have the ability to transport the crude oil and the energy resources that we need across our country.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Sheriff Tom was at the meeting the other day with us, and, um, I think he maybe has some information or some questions, uh, anything that you want to bring up?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
If I remember right, Mark, you're going to have, um, some fire protection, uh, things set up throughout this, um, area of the pipeline, um, in your work camps and so on and so forth?
Yes, yes. The work camps themselves will have fire protection there, um, as well as, like I said earlier, as well as medical care for the people. Uh, we will, like I said, for right-of-way, as far as safety, that is stripped clean. They also have some fire protection there on the site. So, it, it is a concern, and, and it's, we do appreciate the fact that the, you know, the local ranchers and things like that, um, have definitely made it a point uh, that we're aware of that concern, and, uh, it is being, being dealt with. Uh, it is actually, I believe, a lot of that has, ends up happening, uh, in their right-of-way agreements with the individual landowners. So, they, they've dealt with it very well, I believe.
So, if you get the pipeline built, how quickly, after it's built, do you start putting oil through it?
When we get the pipeline built, um, what happens is we, we build the pipeline, and we get the pump stations up. Like I said, that'll be about eighteen months to twenty-four months, so two years. And as soon as everything is done and pressure tested and ready to go, they will start putting oil in the pipeline to pre-fill it, um, then verify that everything tests out correctly, and then start pumping oil on a regular basis. The pre-filling will take probably about thirty days. The pre-filling will take probably about 30 days to get it filled.
Okay.
And then we will, we will pump oil as soon as possible. We just started up our Gulf Coast line, which went from Cushing to Houston, basically. And that took about 30, that wasn't 30 days. That was about 20 days to fill that, pressure it up and then start pumping oil. So that's similar to what we'll do here. And everybody will be notified on a regular basis. And that's kind of one of my purposes here as well, is to try and check in with you guys on a quarterly basis. Make sure that I answer any questions that you might have about our project and any, any concerns that you have. And hopefully we can address all those.
I still have two more. I, I'd like you to help me with some answers to questions that I hear most frequently. And, and one of them is that people are concerned that you will not be aware of any leaks that are going on. And I would like to have a response to that. I had an understanding of it, but since you're here, I, I want to make sure I'm right.
Our, our pipeline right now, we like to say that this is going to be the safest pipeline that's ever been built. And I believe it will be. We have more stringent requirements than they've ever had. Some of those include sensors that are stationed throughout the pipeline, every five or so miles, that will detect deformation in the pipeline, also detect a drop in pressure. As soon as that happens, they're monitored in Calgary, 24 hours a day, our pipeline is monitored. So when they detect a drop in pressure, they will notify a technician to go and find out why. Typically those will be, I mean, those will be, happen almost immediately. If it's a significant drop, everything will just be shut down immediately and we'll go find the problem and fix it. It's, you know, the only problems that we've had on the rest of our pipeline, that's about 3,000 miles of pipeline, it's always been at pump stations and above ground because those are bolted together and that's where you have moving parts that you have to fit together. So we've never had problems with leakage of our pipelines before. But we do have a, it's state of the art. It's all satellite controlled and monitored. So it will be safe. And we do have, we will have employees that will check the line on a regular basis. And I believe this is every week, we have to check the line. We fly the line every week to look for anything within the right of way, which includes construction. If someone's doing construction and didn't notify us or whatever the case, we need to be aware of that for everyone's safety.
Okay, the second question that I hear or comment, I would say, kind of refers back to what you said earlier. You were talking about how it's important for the United States to have access to the oil for its own energy needs. The thing I hear so often is, wow, they're going to pump it clear across the United States and ship it out. I, I guess I would just like a, a response to that sort of thing.
Currently in the United States, you're not allowed to ship it out, ship crude oil out of the United States without a permit.
You'll refine it.
You, you have to have it refined in the United States. And then from that point on, it, it may end up on the open market. It doesn't make a lot of sense to take this oil down, produce it, you know, refine it in, in Houston and then ship it overseas. When they have their own refineries overseas, many of the overseas refineries have much lower standards. So it's much less expensive for them to produce it. So it really doesn't make much sense for that to happen. We can't say that it won't. It's open market at that point. But economically, it makes the most sense that once it's refined here, it stays here.
Okay. Good answer for me. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just have one, one thing that I'd like to bring up and, uh, when I worked for the Alaska State Parks, one of the things I heard was, is that, uh, don't those barrels make a lot of noise coming down that pipeline? So rest, rest assured, there's no barrels in the pipeline. They don't make noise like the wind generators you're making, so.
No, in fact, you know, I-
You'd be surprised how many times we got hit with that up there.
I drive across, I, I live in Omaha and I drive through Lincoln and then west toward York, Nebraska on a regular basis. And our pipeline crosses the interstate and it's been pointed out to me once where it is. And every time I drive across, I try to see where that spot is, just to see if you can tell a difference. Because on one side there's crops, on the other side it's pasture. I have yet to be able to tell without seeing the signs exactly where that crosses. So there's virtually no way to tell where this pipeline is once it's done.
Any other questions or comments? Any questions from the audience? If not, thank you, Mark.
I thank you for your time and I will leave my contact information here so that if you guys have any questions or anyone else comes to you with questions, feel free to contact me. Thank you for your time.
Next item is item 21. And whoever, Compensation Committee.
Good morning. Nick Stroud, HTR Director and Chairman of the Compensation Committee. I feel like I'm echoing. What we're here today is to continue the talk of the proposed wage study. At the last meeting, we were given, I was given two initiatives and we accomplished both of those. One was to prepare and send out an RFP, and I did that. And the second one was to meet with the department head and elected official group, as well as the Compensation Committee, and figure out method or a means to pay for the proposed study. And we did that as well. On November 20th, there was a meeting and a good group of department heads and elected officials were there to discuss this proposed wage study. And in Holly and Jessica's memo, the top squared box is really what I was brought here to convey is that the group is fully supportive of moving forward with the wage study at this time. The goal of the group is to determine equity among all positions across departments and the accuracy of wages for county employees who serve the citizens of our county. The, the funding talk was really twofold. One was how we're going to pay for the study, which when I was here, we were quoting around $70,000. And then the second part and possibly the more important part would be, depending on the results of the study, how we would implement it and where that money would come from. So as far as funding for the study itself, it was decided that the departments would take on the cost of the study and share it equally among the departments based on the number of employees utilizing 2015 budgeted funds. So then the original proposal was that maybe we would split it half using general fund and half using department funds. But then through discussion, it was determined it would be more appropriate to use it based on the number of employees. The second is a little more complicated and it really depends on what the wage study tells us and what that number is going to look like. And so some of the things that were discussed, there's actually kind of two lists. One is a bulleted one, is the goal, the group would be to implement the wage study in its entirety, as we're allowed to do within the goals set by the commission, utilizing growth and CPI dollars. Committed to working with the commission to implement the results in a manner that's fair and be flexible in ideas that are brought forward on how to pay for a study if it comes back that we do need additional funding. And I think that's important because we don't know when we go out on a wage study, what the impact will be until we get it back. And so on the second page, under number three, the additional options. So these are just some things that were talked about. Again, it was just a preliminary meeting, just designed to elicit conversation and where we could go with this. And some of the things we're talking about, supporting a wheel tax, using the growth in CPI funds, return, reviewing our internal fee structures, controlling operational costs, reviewing programs and services, and then looking at any additional outside revenue sources. One of the other goals is, so we don't go 12, 13 years, again, without a wage study, is to commit to looking at this every five years. And we go forward in 20, end of 2014, early 2015, and then late 2019, early 2020, we look at it again and make sure we're still paying fair and equitable wages. So again, we, Holly and Jessica finished up with the important sentence, you know, we, there's a lot of things on the table right now. We don't know exactly where the funding will come from. But again, it's important to know that we don't know what funding's needed because we don't know what the wage study is going to tell us. And so the, there's a scare that we're going to need this huge pot of money and that's not necessarily the case. We don't know that. So, and then at finish up, there's a motion requested to approve the completion of the wage study as listed there. So with that, I know members of the Compensation Committee are here. There's a number of department heads that are here. And so myself or they will stand for questions.
Any questions for Nick?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Did you actually get a cost figure back from somebody that?
Yes, we received two proposals for compensation study. One was from a group called Seagull Waters. They're out of, Seagull Waters, S.E.G.A.L. Waters. They're based out of Minneapolis. And then another one was from Condrion Associates out of Georgia.
And what was, what was the figure of the truth?
Condrion came in at the original quote of 72,500 and Seagull Waters was 67,500. So what that tells us is, a, a couple of things. We did, we did give a short window for responses. So we're not entirely surprised that we didn't get a number of them. Two, in our market, the Midwest, we, we traditionally don't see as many returns for things like this. People like working on the coast because it's easier. And so we present a little bit different of a challenge. So we don't always get the numbers when we're coming back for RFPs. But what is nice is they were within a range of each other, which tells us that the RFP was written correctly and what we were asking was pretty, was standard. So there wasn't a huge range. That's, those are the two that we got back.
Any other questions for Nick?
Mr. Chair, I do have some and I apologize since I wasn't here as part of the conversation last time. I was, uh, as I looked through this, there were a couple of things on the RFP that I was just curious about and I wondered if you had talked about it. If you look at the bottom of the first page of the RFP, it says that, well, ultimately what I understand from this is that we are not going to compare with private organizations, what are?
Go ahead. I'll let you finish your question.
Well, I'm, I'm saying-
Yeah. Our primary focus will be public entities, governmental organizations, trying to compare apples to apples as best we can. However, a good wage study will also look at the local market, realizing that we don't just compete with the city of Rapid City. There are other private industries that we compete with for talent. And so we won't look at private industry necessarily, we'll say in Sioux Falls or in Lincoln, Nebraska, but we would here in Rapid City and Sturgis and Spearfishing around where we draw from our talent. So we, we're going to have to go broader when we look at other governmental entities. But when you look at private industry, you want to stay really focused on your local market.
Okay, because I, I didn't quite get that, that was something we were going to be doing. I think it's important to look at that. The other question that, I, I was a little bit concerned about, I mean, as a commission, if we set goals that we want, what we want to have happen out of this, what, what is the commission really thinking will happen with this? Have we decided that we want to see a certain result? What, and that, like I said, that conversation may have taken place last time and I apologize for not being here. But, but I, I was a little concerned about that because we, what, what are we going to get out of this? What are we going to?
Are you asking from my perspective or the other commissioners?
I'm, I'm asking the commission, do we, do we have some goals that we think we want to see come from spending this money? You ask an employee and they'll say, well, we want to get a better wage. But what, what are we? Do we, what are our goals? What do we want to have happen?
Mr. Chair, I think my idea would be that if the county employees were being paid a wage that's a good living wage for our area and compatible and in line with other companies and government entities in our area, and whether the county taxpayer in Pennington County can afford to pay the bill once we get the idea from the wage study. The last one we had, I think, was a little tough to handle. And whether this one will be that way or not, I don't know. But I think our employees need to be taken care of financially within reason. And, you know, all of us are replaceable and all of us just kind of earn what we, you know, what the job pays right now. And, uh, I won't be here probably to make that decision, but I'll probably be around to listen to what happens. So I'm going to leave it to the rest of you.
I guess what brought this to, to, to the point where we're at today is that the commission was getting requests from different department heads with information that their wages for some of their employees were not appropriate. And so I think the, the goal, at least when, when I voted on it last week, or last time we met, the goal is to try to establish what those wages should be. Now, we did have, and, and as you pointed out, you weren't here, but we did have some discussion as we were talking about that, in that we shouldn't start this process if we weren't willing to move forward with it. Because then it's just a waste of money. And, and that's why part of the, part of the direction given to Nick was, okay, how are we going to pay for it? Not only the, on the short process of how we're going to pay to get the study done, but how are we going to pay to implement this? Because there's no reason to do it if we're not going to implement it. And they pointed out some things that could be done. You know, I, I, that, that could be put into place to, to implement whatever the cost of this might be. Granted, it's hard to know what that cost is. I, hopefully our wages are not way out of line. At least some of the stuff that the sheriff had already done and looking at his, he, he indicated that maybe some of his positions were overpaid. Some of them were underpaid. But, uh, but I think that's what the goal is, to come up with a fair and equitable pay scale and, and within the restraints that the county has to not, I mean, I, I would hope that no one would try to opt out of the tax freeze on the county's level. But there is some options that could be implemented for the county to cover this cost in the long run.
So as part of this, one of the things that came to mind is, is the benefits. We don't compare the benefits in this at all. But we have some very good benefits here. And is that part of the discussion?
Oh, that was not part of the, a wage study, you can, it can be as comprehensive as you want. What we asked them to look at was salaries and that was, we're in the, in the interest of keeping the cost of the proposal down. I know, for example, like the, the city of Rapid City, when they did a compensation study, it had a lot of factors. And you can look at, you can have a consultant come in and look at your pay philosophy and look at how you award merits. You can have them look at your benefit package. You can have them look at your wages. That's a more inclusive ask than what we did when we were just looking at wages. And we do have a good benefit package, which I agree. And we try to sell that when we're advertising and to our new employees that it's not just the wage that you're paid, but also look at the total compensation package. But a huge part of that total, the biggest part of that total compensation package is the wages. Excuse me.
And if the commission accepts it, then the staff and department heads are going to accept it too. I mean, it's a two-way thing. We, I, I've heard lots of conversation that we need to accept it as commissioners, but-
Absolutely.
What about the department heads? What is the discussion there?
That's where it's going to fall on Jessica and myself and Steph and the sheriff's office to educate people on what, and that's what I tried to do in this memo I put together last week. And I realize it was a short week, but- But is, there's a lot of education that comes that just doing a wage study and implementing a wage study isn't a magic wand. And it's not going to fix individual, why not necessarily fix individual grievances? It's not going to make sure everyone is compensated at the same level that, say, the city of Rapid City does. We have our own philosophy. We have our own way that we pay people. And as long as it's within an acceptable range, and that's what's us to determine, then, yeah, you're right. We have to accept it. Not everyone's going to get a raise. That shouldn't be the goal of a wage study, even can be.
I worry because that has seemed to be in the past. Everybody says they're not paid enough. And they want a wage study so that they can get paid more. And I'm, the reason I'm kind of heading this way today is because I think we need to be firm that we are interested in looking at it seriously. But so do the, there's another part of the equation here, and it has to be the staff.
And I'll give the sheriff credit. When he took, when his people took a look at their wages, there were more titles that got dropped than there were that got raised. And what he set out to do, and I talked to him and I talked to Steph and the rest of the people that did that, is if you take a hard look at all of your positions, there are going to be some that are going to be dropped. That's just the nature too. We might have placed them on the scale at the best of our ability. And they might be too high for what we're asking them to do based on the nature of the work that they're doing. One, for example, that we created was a control room operator. And Kevin, I might get this backwards. But rather, in the jail, they do a set of duties. And at JSC, they don't do a large part of those duties. So they don't need to be paid the same. So we created a position that was three steps lower just to make sure that those people out there weren't getting paid the same as the people in jail because they weren't doing the same thing. So it's recognizing that, yes, there might be some that are lower, but there might be some that are higher. And so we're going to have to accept both of that. And that's where it comes from your human resources professionals to educate people that. And I always say, there's 670 people that work here. I bet 665 think they're underpaid.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and that's just the nature of any organization. You'll find the same 99% at any organization. So it's educating people that this is just a tool to try to get us fair and equitable. And it's not going to give everybody a raise. And so that would be something that the three of us would have to do in the next four or five months to make sure people understand that.
I think that that's probably one of my other concerns is that in the information, we talk about delaying the 2016 budget process to make sure we've got this wage study completed. And I am very concerned about that. I hope that the staff is not stuck on that. Because just our conversation, there's a lot of work to be done after the study.
And I'm probably one of the worst department heads to talk about the budgeting process because mine doesn't take the time that, you know, Holly and Julie and KJ and Kevin and his staff put into it. So in talking with Kevin, and I can speak for himself, but there's a, there's a part of the budget that he can continue to work on in his normal time. Same thing with Holly. You can start the process. But the fact that salaries is our largest line item, there is going to have to be a piece that's kind of held up. And if we, if we move forward with this, we can let them, let the consultant know that this is, you know, our timeline is set and it's rigid and, because we can't.
But once you have it, what you just described of what Kevin did in his department, realizing that there were some different positions that needed to be reclassified, et cetera, et cetera, that's what's going to come. Hopefully, we're going to see some things like that coming through guidance of that, that study. And how are you going to budget for that type of thing when you have four or five months? And in that time period, you're going to get a study and you're going to review it. I'm very concerned that you want to restrict the county to the 2016 budget. It may work, but I just want to say this is a very short period of time.
And through the initial discussion that started at the Compensation Committee and moved to this level and in the Department Head Elected Officials Group is that getting this done at the onset of the budgeting process is the only time that it makes sense to do it. For example, if we were to get this in an October time period, well, the budget's already set for next year. And, you know, it's too late in the current year to do something with it. So does it, then it just sit on the shelf for seven months? And then we dust it off and bring it out. So that's why we thought if we could do it now and then have it for the start of the 2015, or excuse me, the 2016 budget.
I'm just very concerned about holding up a budgeting process for it.
If you want to talk to someone about budgets, it would be anyone other than me because my budget can be done in a couple of days.
Okay.
In your mind, do the two bids, basically, we call it, that we have are comparable and compatible with what we asked them to do?
Yes, and that's, thanks for asking because I didn't touch on that. I looked at both of them and I did a side-by-side look. And not, they, they did what we were asking. And the duties that they put in their proposal were the same. So it's just a matter of a couple of things. Well, you know, $5,000 is the difference. The trust in the companies, calling their references, things that I didn't do. I haven't done yet. But, yeah, they had, we made them put a list of references here. A list of references with contact information on the studies that they've done. And that would be part of my homework. And one of the things we put in the motion that we requested is have the Compensation Committee review these RFPs. So I would lean on the other members of the Compensation Committee to split up the number of references we called, the people we've talked to. I've already had good conversation with Minnehaha County about their relationship or their experience with Segal Waters. Talked with the city about their experience with Condry. So I've already personally started that process. But there's a lot more references in there that would need to be vetted out to see how they work, what the results were, what the working relationship was between them and the consultant. But as far as comparable, yeah, they're comparable, they're comparable proposals.
So what you know about them today, then they're comparable. And so all we have basically to look at is the low bid or the high bid.
We wrote directly in our, that all proposals received will be reviewed and evaluated based on a number of factors. And I would like to talk to some of their, the people that they've worked with, their references. Because I think with, as close as the two bids are, I would like to vet out and make sure that the references had good experiences with them and that they felt that it was a professional job. We can just reward it to the lowest bidder today, and that would be fine. I know, based on what Minnehaha County said, Segal Waters was a great company to work for, but that's one reference. They gave me plenty of others that I could.
How would we go about vetting out the rest of them without postponing this for two weeks?
We couldn't. This was due yesterday at 5:00, and this one came in yesterday afternoon. So based on my conversation with Carrie at Minnehaha County, they had a great relationship, I believe. Tom actually was there at the onset of that, our highway superintendent. I don't know his involvement based on when he left there and came here, but.
He's saying no.
No. So that, they gave us a great recommendation. If you were to move forward today and award it to Segal Waters, I would be perfectly happy with that.
What kind of a timeframe do they say it's going to take them to put their study together and get a report back? How long does it take to go through this process?
We requested no later than five months. And both of them said that they can be done within the five-month period. Our thought was as if they just started today or in the beginning of, in the beginning of December, it would be back to us no later than the beginning of May. And that gives us May to review it. But, and I apologize, I didn't make copies for the commission. As I said, this just came in. But they'll be working with us continually throughout the process. So information will be coming in as it's, as it's delivered. So to the final report and recommendations, they're saying at the three-and-a-half-month mark, they're going to start that final report. So we can have that information. And then through the third, end of the third month and the fourth month. And they said they could get it done in a full four months. So there's meetings at the beginning with the group and there's meetings at the end. And that's the thing they saved at the end. It's just kind of a, an exit meeting that we often have. But that third and three-and-a-half, four-month mark is when we start to see our final report coming in from them. So it could be early spring when we start seeing that information come in.
Any other comments or questions for Nick?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
When I look at, I'm not opposed to doing a wage study. I know what it's going to turn out like. It's going to cost us a whole bunch of money. There's just no question about it. And I know the sheriff did a great job and he's got jobs he wants to lower, but not currently. It'll take years to implement the lower ones because you're not going to lower the person in that job now. So the lowering is, I mean, it is going to cost us some money. And the way that we're going to pay for it is a wheel tax. Actually, I would vote for a wheel tax. But that would be to lower the tax on everybody, to lower the property tax in the equivalent amount. Then the wheel tax becomes a user fee for the people who use the roads and not my 98-year-old grandma who doesn't drive, but is still paying for it. So I'm not crazy about using the wheel tax to increase wages. Utilizing the growth in CPI funds, I guess that's, that's fine. Internal fee structures, that isn't going to give us much money, if any. Review and control operational costs, keeping in mind appropriate and quality levels of service provided to the taxpayer. That means we're not going to do that. I don't know. Continue to review programs and services outlined in statute. That's the mandatory stuff, which we should be looking at anyway. So I don't know. I don't mind doing the wage study. I don't know how we're going to pay for it. That's, is, you know, I just ran for election and one of mine was to keep the budget low and keep taxes low, which I know every politician says. But I hate to turn around in the first meeting after that and raise everybody's taxes. So frankly, I'm not going to do that.
Any other comments? We have a suggested motion. Our action previously relative to some of the requests that were brought forward for adjusting wage scales and so on, moved us to this position. And the question now is, what do we do from here? And on one hand, I think we had some comments that referred to accepting a RFP proposal today. But the suggested motion is to move this to the December 16th meeting after the Compensation Committee has a chance to review the RFPs and the criteria and comparables. So somewhere in here, we need to dispose of this item.
Mr. Chair, may I ask one question? The cutoff date was December 1st.
Yep.
What if, I mean, are you taking into account, what if somebody mailed you something with a post date on December 1st? Do you think that would happen?
Both of the ones I got were delivered by FedEx, but I, we went through the mail this morning and there.
Okay, that's fine.
There wasn't anything.
I just was thinking.
And I wrote due by 5:00 PM on December 1st. But if one was postmarked by that and we were given two weeks to review them, I don't see why we wouldn't.
Sometimes if bids, you run into that. I was just curious how you're going to handle it.
But you would be confident, or at least semi-confident with either one of them?
Absolutely, yeah, based on the conversations and experience.
And the prices really aren't out of line.
We felt that there was an appropriate written RFP because they did come in pretty close. It was just differences in their fee structure.
Well, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the completion of the wage study and have the Compensation Committee review the RFPs, establish criteria and comparables to be used, make a recommendation as to the vendor at the next December 16th meeting, and have an implementation date of January of 2016. And that's contingent upon coming up with enough money in the next budget cycle to pay for it somehow. And just because I'm making the motion, I'll comment later. That's my motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion.
That whole thing is contingent upon coming up with some money without just going crazy and raising a whole bunch of taxes. So it's going to still depend on departments and budgeting for next year and how we're looking at it. It's kind of going to be up to the department heads to give us some money too.
All right. Any other discussion?
Just a comment, I guess, for the Compensation Committee. You know, one of your, one of your proposals is, and how to fund this or how to implement it, was continue to review programs and services as outlined in statute. And that's, that's a pretty easy statement to make. A much more difficult process of that whole thing is for these elected officials and department heads to look at what they're doing and saying, you know, by statute, we're not required to do this in county government. And here's how much this is costing us. And you heard what Commissioner Buschgrude had to say about, he's not, he's not interested in a wheel tax that's going to be used. The funds are going to be used to put the implementation of this wage study into play. And I don't think you're probably going to get support to opt out of the tax freeze. Now, you might get some support to go back and pick up some of the past CPI. But if I was on the commission, I wouldn't support that. So, you know, your Compensation Committee, if this motion passes and you're moving forward, should start today of looking at those programs. And frankly, if you, if some of you have some ideas that you could bring back to the meeting on December 16th and say, here's some programs and here's some costs that we're doing today, statutorily we're not required to do, that we could back, back away from. And here's the money that's attached to those. I think that might make this whole program a little bit more sellable.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. Any comments for anyone? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Post motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Mr. Chair, should I propose a 10-minute break?
Second.
Would you settle for seven? We have a motion and a second to take a 10-minute break. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carried.
Motion to come on the executive session.
Corey, the second?
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Post motion carried. Next item is item 22, A and B.
Morning Commissioners, Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. I have two abatements for you. Mr. David Lamb. Both of these are mobile homes that have moved. Mr. Lamb is a mobile home that moved to Wyoming in October of 2012. The owners obtained a moving permit and the 2013 taxes were paid in advance before the home was moved. When that happens, the taxes are paid in advance. And then when the tax bill is printed the following year, we have to remember to abate that bill that has already been paid. We do many of these. For whatever reason, we missed this one. We need to delete the tax record on this home that taxes are already paid on.
What kind of a system do you have to, so you remember that? I mean, obviously, I can't just put a little sticky note out somewhere. Is there a system in place?
We are barely past the sticky note. We are working with our tax software to try to identify these. And especially with the new tax software, always trying to figure out a way to identify them as their. new tax software, always trying to figure out a way to identify them as they're created. And every now and then, we find one of these that we miss. There is a report, the short answer is there's a report that we print in January, and in January, you'll see and have seen many of these abatements to do exactly this.
So, there isn't, I mean, you said we're just barely past a sticky note. So, there really isn't a system in place that you create a list or you put it on a calendar or anything like that?
We print a report in January of all of these where taxes were paid in advance. And from that report, the abatement comes to you all at once in January. But trying to get that report to identify all of these in the different situations that they happen, we haven't perfected it yet. We get most of them, but obviously, here's one that was missed.
And so, is there, was there taxes assessed on this then in 2014 as well? Because you said it was, the taxes, it was not taken off the tax rolls for 2013 and 2014. And we're dealing with 2013 taxes. So, do we have 2014 taxes out there as well?
2014, we do have a 2014 assessment on it, taxes paid in 2015.
Yeah.
But that'll be dealt with next year. We can't abate it now. We can't, we can't abate a, an assess, a tax bill that ain't printed yet.
I understand that, but it just goes to show that we've got, I mean, it's, you say you run this report off at the end of the year, but obviously, we, when we ran it off the end of the year of 2013, we still went ahead and kept it on the tax rolls for 14.
Yeah, because we just, we just discovered it now. So, we're past the point that that 2014 assessment was already created.
What do you, okay, maybe I'll change my direction of trying to get an answer from you. Is there, do you have a current system in place that will stop this in the future?
Yes, we print a report in January of all of these properties that this falls into.
But I don't mean to be argumentative with you, but you did that in the past and now we're, but we're still dealing with them. So, I'm asking you, what, because this is an ongoing problem. It's been an ongoing problem for the last four years. What can we do to stop this from happening in the future?
We are working with a new tax software. And with that new tax software, we are finding out the things that we have to identify for that report to come out 100%. With that new tax software, the first time we do it, it doesn't come out perfect because we can't imagine every scenario that takes place for that report to work.
So, does anybody else on the board understand what we're doing different now than what we have in the last four years to correct this problem?
No, but I can tell you how we can stop it.
How?
Make the motion to take both of these out of the department head's salary till next month.
So, Mr. Chair.
I wasn't joking, folks.
So, Shannon, what you're seeing is, when did you start your software? It was started in 2013 and then your first report was the beginning of 2014 and we're still working on it. Maybe it would help if we had some times that were kind of let us.
I'm not exactly sure. When we went on the new tax software, the first time we probably printed this was probably January of 13.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
On the new tax software.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just want to remind the Equalization Department that every one of these, when they come through and they're approved, we abate the taxes on this property. The schools still get about 70% of each one of these abatements. And that is, that 70% of these is spread across the rest of us taxpayers to compensate for it. So, I think it needs to stop today.
This, this abatement you've got here now, as I said, the taxes have already been paid in advance. We need to delete the bill that has already been paid.
But we do have 2014 that we're going to have to do next year, or somebody's going to have to do it next year.
That's a different issue. We'll do that next year.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I can explain the other mobile home. The other abatement is, see, we did Lamb, Mr. Dial Deal. This is a mobile home that was moved to Meade County in October of 2013. It was moved without a moving permit. It went to Meade County. Taxes were paid in 2013 and 14 in Meade County. The treasurer's office, after discovering that it has moved, the treasurer's office has just recently collected the fee for the moving permit here. The abatement will be for the 2013 and we have, we have the moving permit fee and we have verification that taxes were paid in Meade County.
Any questions on that one? If not, do we have a motion on both or each one separately, what's your wish?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to abate both of the taxes for Mr. Dial and Ms., and Mr. Lamb.
Second. Was that a second?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Reluctantly aye.
Post? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, item 23. The proposed listing of the northern long-eared bat.
Good morning. Scott Guffey, Painton County Weed and Pest Director. In talking with Commissioner Troutman, she asked if it'd be appropriate for the commissioners to make comments on this proposed listing. And this, this isn't the first time it'd been on my radar. We'd heard about it at the Forest Advisory Board meeting this summer. And at the time, I asked somebody if it'd be appropriate for the commissioners to make comments on it, and they, they really didn't think, think so. And then, as we got close to the deadline, actually Holly contacted me and we were kind of close to that deadline, so we decided not to. But now that they've extended it, we're hearing more chatter about it and, and they're actually having a rules hearing by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service tonight up in Sundance at the Crook County Courthouse. And it'd probably be appropriate that if, I think it wouldn't hurt anything if the commissioners went on record opposing this listing. And the reason why I say oppose it is it's got some devast, potential devastating effects to the Black Hills and the management of the Black Hills, which Bill will talk about in a second here. But the real reason why, why it's endangered, why the population's dropping on the east coast, on the, on the range on the east coast, we're on the western edge, very western edge of the, of the bats range, is this white-nose syndrome, which you may have heard about in the past on the caves. They've started to put bars up on the caves and restrict entrance into these caves because humans can transport it, but it doesn't affect humans, but it is devastating for bats. And it's been real devastating on the east coast, but we, of the 38 states that the home range is in, only 17 states have had this white nose. So, South Dakota doesn't have white nose yet. It's kind of like back when the prairie dogs were going to be listed. We didn't have plague in South Dakota. And then, now that we're protecting the populations, now we have plague in our South Dakota population. So, the real issue is not habitat for the bat, it's the white nose. That's white-nose syndrome disease that's killing the bats. So, that's really where the research and the try to stop the spread of the white nose and not create or protect more habitat for the bat. But here today is Bill Colburn with Nine and Timber, and he's going to talk a little bit on how, if it gets listed, what it could affect, especially timber industry in the Black Hills.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to give you some information about our industry and also the effects of the listing of the long-eared bat. First of all, I think it's really important for you guys to understand that, and it's been kind of helpful for me to understand how this bat lives in the Black Hills. It doesn't live in the caves or in tunnels all the time. In fact, it only lives in there during the winter. It lives in trees from about April all the way through October and primarily in pine trees. And if this bat is listed as endangered, that means any taking of any single species or habitat is a violation of the Endangered Species Act. And the conditions that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife is proposing is that they will, they will be protecting all habitat, which means cutting trees. And that will mean that there will be no, you know, if there's suspected any, any bat habitat in an area of a timber sale, that the mitigation will be of not cutting trees between April and October. And you can imagine that impact on the industry. Our industry employs about 1,500 people in the Black Hills and has a direct economic impact of around $118 million. And it's also been part of our customer culture over the last 120 years of managing our forests. And the Black Hills is one of the best managed forests in the, in the nation, in spite of the fact that we have a large mountain pine beetle infestation. The irony of this whole listing is that the bats like large trees fairly open and trees that have large crevices in between the bark. And the best way to get that is through management of allowing the larger trees to grow and have thick bark. If, in fact, the listing occurs, that means there'll be no management in the Black Hills for practically six months a year, or probably even longer than that because you won't have any, any industry here to do that work, which means that the bats' habitat over the long term will be endangered from large mountain pine beetle infestations and fire. And so, the habitat could be destroyed by the listing for the bat. So, anyway, we would really request that the Painton County Commissioners write a letter to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife regarding this, and I think Scott's going to talk about how that can be done. Thank you. And I, if you have any questions, I can answer them later.
Any questions? Go ahead.
The reason I put it on the agenda today was to get maybe your permission and direction to go ahead and write some comments. I'd work with Ben Woodkeek with the Black Hills Forest Resource Association on getting appropriate comments from the commissioners towards opposing this listing, if that's the commission's wish. I would go ahead and proceed and then bring them back to the next meeting. We got time to get those on record.
That's my motion.
Second. Have a motion and a second.
So, Mr. Chair, can I just make a comment on the letter? What we will be doing then, Scott, is we'll, we'll be talking about the timber industry and what that'll do to the economy. We would talk about the danger of fire created by not having management, so that'd be the safety of the people. The other thing would be, the forest is so infected and has so many problems right now with, with natural pests, the mountain pine beetle, but that it's creating issues of safety, but also the economy of tourism. And I don't know what all you're going to put in there. I just was curious about if you, if you were going to do something besides the forestry issue.
No, we could, you know, we could try to look at all the far-outreaching effects that this listing could have. I mean, it's, if you start digging down, it could be really far-reaching what this listing could have, the potential of restricting.
And another comment to the commission, one of the things, I mean, when they talked, U.S. Fish and Wildlife talked to us in, I believe it was July, at the Forest Advisory Board. I mean, they, they seemed to think we would really make a difference in making, in sending a letter and making comments. And then they kind of, it kind of seemed like it wasn't going to be an issue. And now, boom, here it is again. And it, it's been a tremendously up and down thing. I'm not sure what is driving that, but I just think we need to do something about it. It could drop back again because it's been up and down for a year. And so, I think we need to get on record and then that might make a difference.
Yeah, and I was also going to attend the hearing tonight in Sundance. Unless any of the commissioners going, then I won't go. But if no one's going, I'll go up and get on record saying that you guys are coming out, opposing the listing as well. Because there's only two hearings in the whole United States and Sundance is one of them. They really worked hard on getting a hearing here, so.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I do. I find it very interesting that whoever's writing all of this article that we have here in front of us today, which I presume came from the federal government, that they, they prefer to have bats over humans. And they talk about wind farms. And it says here, "The Service State Natural Resources Agency and Wind Energy Industry are developing a Midwest wind energy multi-species habitat conservation plan that will provide wind farms a mechanism to continue operating and killing bats legally while minimizing and mitigating listed bat mortality." So, that shows you what they think about your business compared to wind farms.
Any other comments? If not, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carried.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. Okay, item 24, request for approval of a second approach. Variance to ordinance 14.
He came in late October to apply for a building permit for a shed. During that time, when we were doing a review of the building permit, I noticed that there were two approaches on the property. This is an aerial view of the subject property. You can see the long approach that comes off of just northeast of Alberta, goes down was for an old RV to be parked there. And then also, further down in Alberta, there's the regular approach driveway to the, to the residence. We've had many discussions with Mr. Carey, and he is here today to tell you his story and ask your permission for the second approach on the property.
Yeah, really, there's no other place to put this approach that is really equitable. In 2009, I asked the planning commission if I was required a building permit to put this in, and they said no. There was no restrictions on me. And the person that I talked to, I talked to him about five minutes. So, I went ahead and built this in, and now they're telling me I'm illegal and I need to make it legal. So, I would like a variance on this to where I could have the second approach.
Yes?
Why did you come to us directly and not go through the variance?
I can't hear you, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Why did you come to us directly and not go through the variance process?
I still.
Why?
Can I walk up there? I'm very hard.
I apologize. I'll be, I'll be louder. I apologize. So, why did you, why, why did this come to us and not go through a variance process? I mean.
Well, I went in and asked for permission to get, put a temporary type storage, you know, one of the portable ones where the motorhome is. And that's what brought all this about.
But, but normally, we would have a variance process that would deal just with your second approach. It wouldn't have anything to do with your shed at this point.
I guess I didn't know about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair? Yes? Do you know who you talked to at planning and zoning when you asked that question?
No, I don't.
Man, woman, or otherwise?
It was a man.
Man? Okay.
Yes.
Do we have any way of identifying?
Do we have any way of identifying that? I don't know if we have anything.
We have an idea who it was based on the description that he gave, yeah.
And who, what you think it was?
Aaron.
Okay. What do you suggest we do today?
Well, my suggestion is to leave things as they are, and then we can talk about this variance. If I can't get it for the structure, then I won't put it up there.
For ordinance fourteen says you can only have one approach per property unless the board of commissioners approve a second. And I believe that Highway has some comments on this as far as the location possibly being an unsafe location. There's also some concern that it has also been built within the section line.
So, the approach is built in the section line?
Yeah, I can pull up Rapid Map real fast for you here.
Well, so, if we made a motion today to allow the second approach, then you still have to work through this whether it's on a section line or not?
We believe it's, I believe, we'd have to have a surveyor to go out there. Again, using Rapid Map lot lines and section lines, it's entertainment purposes only. But a surveyor would have to go determine, see how far in the section line, if he is in the section line. He might be even in the setback. He's a corner lot, so he has two fronts and two sides. So even from your section line, you're looking at fifty-eight feet back. The entire approach that he built would be well within that fifty-eight feet. So if you were to approve it today, what we would require is a survey to find out where he is in relation to the section line, and then he would have to apply for, with a penalty for construction within a section line. Now, section line penalties, it's just double, it's not double plus an additional like some of the other permits that we have. So, that's where we stand.
And his, the thing that brought this to light was he wants to build another building out there.
Yeah.
Is that gonna be a problem for him, even if we approve this approach?
It appears it could be in the section line and definitely within the fifty-eight feet setback from the section line.
So he's probably not gonna get the building permit irregardless.
For that location on the property.
And frankly, we don't want him driving his motor home across his drain field to get over to that.
Well, we have, there's been some discussion that the original site plans show the drain field in his front yard. We have a site plan from nineteen ninety-four, and it's been penciled in that actually shows it going under the driveway to basically the south side of the driveway. Now, that would have to be confirmed through pumping receipts or from a pumper to where the actual drain field is. But...
Well, I'm inclined to make a motion to allow him to have the second approach, but I'm not sure that that's the right thing to do today if we don't know, even if we make this motion, whether he's gonna be able to have it. So it looks like we ought to, first of all, figure out, can he have it there? And if he can, I'm inclined to let him have it, or at least I would make the motion. I don't know if you can get two other people to agree with me.
You got one.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
PJ, can I ask you a question? Is the road where it comes off of, you got a pointer there? Can you point it out where this thing is?
Right here?
No, have him do these magic marker.
What are you looking for, Ken?
I'd like to know which road we're talking about, which approach, and where it goes, and where the section line is. Now, go back to the picture that you had there.
Yeah, it forwarded, I don't know why.
Okay.
No, 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 no. Hold on a second. Red, hopefully this works. So this is the approach right...
Technology, right?
Technology, yeah. Try blue.
Got some index cards?
Flash card.
All right, for the fourth time. Yeah, it's doing it. All right.
Technology, isn't it, grand?
Glad I didn't have to do this. We've been here all week.
Nah, you would've been fine.
Okay, I'll just go ahead and ask it.
You got it? She basically underlined it.
Oh, boy.
I'll erase that.
Okay, that's where it comes off. That's the one we're talking about.
That is correct.
Where's the section line go?
Approximately where are those trees? I don't know if he can...
Roughly through there, roughly.
Okay.
It's not exact, the road is not in the middle.
Let me ask you this, maybe this is a stupid question, but isn't that what sections lines are for, is access to property and to, for roads? So if it's for access to property and roads, what are we complaining about? He built a road on it. So now, what he needs to do, to me anyway, he needs, in my thoughts, he needs to just ask the county commissioners to open a section line so he can build a road on it.
Well, there is a road there already.
Okay, but still, was it built with permission of the county commissioner or just built?
We have a letter from two thousand and one from Scott Anderson, Penning County Department, that requests, there was a quest memorandum to have that road built. I have yet to find approval in the minutes for that.
Okay, so then, can't he just add to the road that's already there?
That's what he's done.
Right, that's what he did.
Exactly. So what are we complaining about? Just part of the road.
Mark's got a comment.
Got it.
Okay.
Well, PJ, you said that the driveway that he put in there may be too close to the section line. But if the roads, if there's already a road on that section line, is your concern where it intersects with the...
More so about Highway's concern. That's Highway's concern.
All right.
Well, I just wanted to inform the commission on some criteria, safety standard criteria on intersections. The Ashtoe or the South Dakota Road Design Manual on Access Management says that there should be a corner clearance of about a hundred and seventy-five feet. Excuse me, Don. So what that is saying, a hundred and seventy-five feet from...
Welcome to my world.
Go through this one again.
Go back to the other one. The one that works.
That's where we were. That's right, good. Try that one. I don't know if it's gonna work.
Okay, it says it should be...
Yeah.
Well, a hundred, you'll get the picture. A hundred and seventy-five feet back from the intersection with Alberta Lane. Now, that's the South Dakota Manual of Design. The Rapid City Manual of Design says that at a twenty-five mile an hour, in a twenty-five mile an hour zone, it should be a hundred and five feet. And whether that's on the section line or on Alberta, just, we should set our intersections or our approaches back from intersection just for safety standards, not coming in at the angle that it is. That would be our concern there.
That section line road that's going up there, where does it go to and what's its service?
That goes to the athletic club. There's an athletic club to your right hand or the east and a tennis facility up on top. And it's a dead end road, so it has very, very little traffic probably coming off of it. But the issue for Mr. Carey is if the farther you go east on that section line, the steeper the terrain gets. For him to get up the hills, the farther east he goes, it's gonna, he won't be able to climb that hill. Our suggestion at the Highway Department would be to bring that over to the south and intersect it with his existing approach, but it appears that his septic system may be in that area, and he would be crossing that.
Or couldn't he just, instead of running it all the way out to Alberta Lane, couldn't he just come out of his driveway and take a right-hand turn and hit the section line right there where your pointer is?
Very steep topography.
That's steep terrain there. He wouldn't be able to go back a hundred and five feet, but, you know, that may be possible just a little bit to the west where he can, he may not meet the footage, but he could still come out away from the main intersection is an option. You know, that's your...
How much traffic is there on that, going in and out of that driveway, sir?
It's a week.
How much traffic along Alberta?
No, 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 no.
How much traffic along this road?
How much do you park in there? Do you, you got cars going in and out of there several times a day?
No, I think I've had a, I pulled my pickup in there once this year.
Okay, and the motor home you take in?
I've sold the motor home.
Okay.
So it isn't there, and I'm looking for a place to store one of my antique cars.
The purpose of the shed is for storage.
Storage, and I'm talking about a storage unit that is one of these portable type, not a, no concrete floor or any of that in it.
But if, but if, if he's not gonna get the, maybe we need to back up and, because if we're not gonna give him the building permit to put this portable storage unit in there, then it kind of nullifies needing the driveway, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. He's also invested in all the work in the driveway.
Sure.
Yep. So we were looking for some direction today to see where we could go with this without having to apply for a variance and possibly...
Yeah.
At that expense.
Make a motion to continue it for two weeks until we find out what's really going on?
Yeah, because don't we, can you tell us?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's second, isn't it?
Did you second? Okay, we do have a motion and a second.
Can you tell us whether or not, how are we gonna determine whether or not you're gonna let him have the building permit? What process do we need to go through for that? You guys are gonna review it and come back with a recommendation?
Where he proposes it, because the lot line to Alberta and the lot line to the road going to the recreation center, those are considered fronts, so you'd have to be at least twenty-five feet back. If he can do that, it was proposed not to be twenty-five feet from his property line. What we really need to do is find out where that section line actually is. Everything kind of hinges on that.
We could apply for a variance to the setback.
He could do that as well. We have to see if it's a section line setback or just a property line setback.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think we have a little problem. If we had an employee that told him that there wasn't any problem with putting that in that position that he did, are we going to penalize this gentleman for listening to one of our employees? I would hope not.
That's why we're working with him.
I got you, that's right where you're going, but...
But Ken, he's not gonna need the driveway approach if we don't let him put the shed in there, so...
Well, that's where I'm headed with this. So if we allowed him to put the driveway in there, and he was using it for his motor home, but he since sold his motor home, so are we gonna tell him now that he can't use the driveway? And so if we're not gonna tell him not to use the driveway, then I don't know how we can refuse to give him the little shelter that he wants to put his car under.
Because you don't know what's gonna happen when this gentleman sells his place, and you have that there. It might be for a totally different use.
And so what other would it be other than a vehicle?
I have no idea. I can't look that far in the future.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion further on the motion? Not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Why are we getting all these?
Okay, we move on to...
Getting all these.
Item twenty-five.
You're done.
That's it.
You can go. I'll do the follow-up, okay? Okay, thank you.
You know, here's, Mr. Chairman, here's another one. Why are we getting these outside of the planning department?
Find out. This is basically a request to put a single wide Milbaha home on the property. By the time they submitted it, it would not be heard until January twelfth. Their desire is to look at the, ask the board of commissioners if they could possibly put the single wide on prior to the conditional use permit being approved by the planning commission. We as staff cannot do that.
And we own all the land there, all the sections, and we don't have everybody five-hundred feet from us. And the reason why, our son was renting the house down by Cottonwood, South Dakota, and they moved the grain reeds around there, and now their house is infested with mice, and they have a one-year-old daughter. It's concerned about the healthy environment for her, and so we said we need to downsize anyway, we need a smaller house, and they can have a bigger one. And so we decided to go for sixteen by eighty, because we don't need any bigger house. And I never knew about any of this. On your own land, they said if we lived, had double wide or had a park, you know, to live in for a trailer, and we don't have that on our land, we don't live in the city. I didn't know anything about any of this, but we want to get, we don't want it until January twelfth. Christmas is coming on, and we have to rent a house or something if you let our son live in our house. We don't have a house, and they can't move it. And then Todd Seeler came, he's our contractor to the septic tanks, they said he could go ahead. We can't move our trailer down there because you can't hook up anything until it's approved. So we'd like to be approved today. I've never run into anything like this before. And we own all the land around it, all the sections, and nobody's within five-hundred feet, so who are you gonna send letters to us?
What compounded the problem is the holiday season, planning commission only meets once this month.
Right, see. And then, see, Brittany was supposed to come down on the twelfth, and she said the weather caused it, she couldn't come. We'd met the deadline, because then Todd said we'll wait and see if the perk tests are okay. So then she came down on the next Wednesday, and that was the twenty-third, wasn't it? Yeah, Wednesday. And then I came up here on the twenty-fourth, because Todd said go up and get the permit then. So I come up here, and I found out about this conditional use permit. And you were at a meeting that day, right, twenty-fourth?
No, that's possible.
Yeah. And then I called you on the phone, and then they said, you said we could hit you on Monday. And we discussed this, right? But if she would've came, then we wouldn't, we'd met the deadline. But anyway, I came up here, and she said, that one lady, was it Erin? Erin, Jeanie Erin?
Jerry.
Yeah. Well, anyway, she said that they didn't meet the deadline, but she said I could've at five o'clock, but she said she'd already sent those, remember?
That Thursday required an early submittal for the advertising.
But we could've filled at five o'clock that day, couldn't we?
Well, the deadline was Wednesday, you were actually a day...
Mr. Chair?
Oh, I see.
PJ...
Yes, sir.
But it's really...
Isn't there something in our ordinances that allow ranch and farmhand extra housing on ag property?
This wouldn't be an extra, this would be the primary residence on that property.
Isn't there another house there?
Not on that lot, then we can tell.
No. Well, see, that's where I was born and raised, that, right there, originally.
So...
The issue isn't...
Two separate lots where the house is, isn't it?
No, no, no.
If you look at the screen, this, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, this is where they used to live, they sold that. That's where you're currently residing.
Yeah.
And they're looking to put a residence in here. Now, it's a single wide.
Where's it in here at?
Right in this area.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a single wide, and our ordinance does not allow a single wide without conditional use permit. The structure has to be at least twenty by twenty.
On ag land?
Yes.
Yes.
No, I'm...
My best of my knowledge, yes.
Okay, so...
A single wide.
So this is a typical conditional use permit application.
It's very typical.
And they've paid the money.
Yes, and it's already...
And so all we're doing is messing with the timeframe along there.
And I already paid nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars anyway, the lien and everything.
And the septic permit and everything with that, yes. So because the meeting, because it wouldn't be heard until mid-January, they're requesting possible action.
Or bypassing the planning commission and coming straight here.
Yeah, because otherwise the plumbers and everybody...
My motion is granted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to grant the variance. Any further discussion?
As long as Larry's shaking his head, yes, we can, then...
I would tell you that Larry Ruland's expression changes when he gets on a horse.
And I became a teacher because of his mother. His mom...
Any other comments on the motion?
So this would still be heard before the planning commission on the twelfth, and the research the staff has done right now, we don't really see any reason why they wouldn't approve it, but we just, you never know. Right now, from staff's standpoint, it'd go forward like every other.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
I really appreciate it.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
My son will be happy.
Mr. Ruland? Did you have any relatives over in Wyoming?
Yep.
Dylan?
Kinda, down the line.
Right.
Great guy.
Hope you're moved in by Christmas.
Oh, I hope so, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have ten grandchildren, four greats, so...
Uh, kinda, down the line.
Right.
Great guy.
Hope you're moved in by Christmas.
Oh, I hope so too.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have ten grandchildren, four greats, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Next item is item twenty-six. Ready?
Good afternoon. Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. Um, I think I've got the right item, I didn't jump in.
Yep, vacation rental home ordinance.
Where we left this off, I think about a month ago now, uh, was I, one of the, the primary question that was presented to me at that time was the issue of joint tenancy with right of survivorship, which is a pretty common probate avoiding, uh, mechanism, uh, to convey interest in property when one spouse or one joint tenant passes away, um, the other is, becomes the sole owner. Primary question there was that, is that a transfer that would, uh, put an end to a vacation home rental in a suburban residential zone district? I didn't think it was the request to myself, I think I, or request from the board, and I, and I recommended it, was that I would get with our Register of Deeds, Donna Meyer, and confirm so that we'd be on the same page, hopefully with that opinion. We did meet, and we are on that, uh, same page. Uh, the one thing that Donna, um, provided to me is that in that joint tenancy circumstance, the only thing that has to happen after, uh, one joint tenant, uh, is deceased, is that a, an affidavit of termination of joint tenancy must be filed with the Register of Deeds. And that's very consistent with the research I did, because that's not a new deed, that's simply a document saying that the joint tenancy is now dissolved and the, the surviving joint tenant, uh, no longer has any claims against their interest, which was already a hundred percent. Long way of saying, that is not a transfer, that would not work to, um, uh, discontinue, um, a rental in a suburban residential zone district. So, having answered that, I think the only other question that I, I, I left with the board was, if you are interested, almost everything else is a transfer. Almost anything else, there's gonna be deeds that follow, uh, that are going to violate the ordinance technically. So, the question, I think, maybe from some of the, uh, citizens who may have vacation home rentals out there, uh, and the question left to the board is, do you want me to attempt to draft a definition of transfer? 'Cause we don't have one right now in the ordinance. So, do you want me to draft a definition of transfer that makes some exceptions to the standard understanding of what a transfer is? So, uh, should, should we have a definition of transfer that allows a, a mom and dad to transfer their vacation home to their daughter? Or their son, or son-in-law, or third cousin remo, how far do you wanna take it if you wanna take it any direction at all? So, that's the remaining question, really, I think, for the board, to tell me to leave no definition in the ordinance, so you just go by state law? Or do you want a definition that gives some exceptions, 'cause it is your ordinance and you can do that, uh, for purposes of, uh, the primary issue, and that is vacation homes in suburban residential zone districts?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with, with doing that, and we probably need to draft some. I really want to eliminate and not, and I don't know if it's possible, I don't want any corporations involved. I don't want a joint tenancy between mom and a corporation, or dad and mom and a corporation. Can you do that? Can a corporation or an LLC or something be a joint tenant? I don't know the answer to that. 'Cause I don't want that, 'cause if that's the case, then you'll never get rid of these, because the corporation will always own it, all you'll do is transfer the stock.
Well, and that's a, that's an issue that could, um, there are some corporations, as I understand it now, um, PJ is here, they've done a little bit of research. There are some corporations that currently do own, uh, vacation home rentals in, in the situation we're talking about.
If we did that.
And, um, as far as a corporation being a joint tenant, I, I don't exactly know the, you know, if the equivalent of deceased is dissolution of the ordinance, I, I don't.
No, they're, they're a person in the state, so I suppose, uh, it maybe can be.
But you're right, shareholders can, uh, they can sell their shares and not transfer a deed, and so the deed doesn't ever show up, 'cause there doesn't have to be one. And that's a transfer of ownership, if you will, but it didn't transfer via deed.
Correct. Donna Meyer, Register of Deeds. Um, in my line of work, if somebody comes in with a deed and has private individuals and a corporation as joint tenants, I can't stop prevention of the recording. But you could write something different for their def, defining transfer for this ordinance, that could be set up differently.
So, I don't, I don't mind you doing that, Jay, but I, I wanna be careful about that part of it.
You gonna have this done by the sixteenth?
I'll sure give it a, an effort, but that's just, that's one, one issue, I guess. Do you want, um, uh, do you want a definition of transfer that allows, um, if I, if my, my wife and I own a rental today, and the ordinance is in place right now, and we decide, you know what, we wanna, uh, add our daughter, or we wanna convey it to our daughter with a life estate in us, that's a transfer. Is that okay that they're next from doing that by you, or do you want an exception written into definition that would allow that to happen? And that way, keep the, the rental in the name of the daughter after the transfer and have it be legal? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, go ahead.
Yes.
You were gonna say something else.
Well, I, I was just gonna ask if, um, initially you talked about, um, the removal of joint tenancy not being a transfer. And, uh, so if at a point the survivor wants to add another name and make it joint tenancy again, would that fit into the realm of a transfer?
That would be a transfer, because at that point in time, you are creating or conveying or granting an interest in a brand-new entity or person that did not exist prior. So, that would be a transfer. If you are in a joint tenancy today and one dies, there is no new transfer, so that perfectly, that can happen without any violation of our current ordinance. But if five years from now, you create a new joint tenancy, you've created a new interest that, previous to that, didn't exist, and that would be a transfer. So, it's basically what you got in place now.
What you're gonna live with.
Uh, um, is the issue.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Jay, I'm kinda withdrawn on this. I, I don't like to see the LLCs and the corporations and things like that involved in continuation of vacation home rentals on suburban residential property. I think the original idea was sooner or later that they would go away in residential, in that suburban residential. So, my thoughts were to myself, no, uh, no LLCs, no corporations would have it, be able to transfer that, let down the line. And I would not like to see it go from, uh, you know, it's okay by me, the husband, the wife, wife, the husband, it'd be political or correct, partner to partner, whatever that may be. Uh, but it's, if, if their name is on the title today, then it stays with those two names and, uh, and doesn't go any further than that.
So, if a corporation owns it today, they, they, and they never do dissolve, they can own it for the next thousand years?
That, uh, we messed it up, if that's where it is right today, yep.
But if, uh, just so I wanna make sure of the, the boundaries of what I'm working with here, are, are you saying if, um, a husband owns it today, ten years from now, he wants to deed it to his wife, that's okay or not okay?
Uh, the name wasn't on it to start with, I.
Transfer.
I don't know.
He could deed it, he'd just lose his classification. He, he wouldn't be a vacation rental again.
Well, okay, let's, uh.
I can see it coming already.
Get some more input here.
Here I am.
Part of what, part of what am I, well, part of what I'm hearing is that, right now, I really don't have a definition to write. Because if, if, unless you want me to write something about, um, sale of shares in a corporation, i- is by definition, uh, if, that, unless I were to go somewhere down that line, um, I'm not hearing that I'm, I'm being asked to draft a definition of transfer yet.
Listen to Cory first.
Until we get the, uh, discussion completed.
I seem to always be the thorn, or the exception to everything when it comes to vacation home rentals. It's nice to see you all again. Um.
Sure is.
Ken and I were married nine years ago. He owned the property before we were married. Uh, my name is not on that property yet, but if something happened to Ken, it would be. Now, we've been working with estate planning and everything else, which is nobody's business, but, uh, the one vacation home we have placed into an LLC, it is on ag land, it's on Gen Ag. Um, the second vacation home is on suburban residential, it's a one-acre lot, it's the one that my name is not on, his daughter's name is not on it. But if something happened to Ken, we need the ability to keep it as a vacation home. We would like it to remain as a vacation home, but according to what this is all saying is that's not even possible. What you're saying is you're gonna completely limit that in our wishes to keep it as a vacation home, because we don't want to sell it.
That's the idea of, of, of the ordinance, is eventually do away with them in suburban.
I know.
Well, then you're here, well, you already, we went through this argument before, and you know where we're at on it.
I know.
I'm, I'm saying you're back to try to change it.
Yes, Ron, I am.
'Cause you don't like it.
Ron.
A lot of laws I don't like.
Ron, suburban residential, there should still be exceptions to be able to have a vacation home, and my property is one of them, our property is one. No, it's not my property, it's my husband's property. But there should be an exception, and there should be a pathway, and I will stand here, and you will still have to deal with me in the advent that I ever lose my husband, which would be awful. But I will be back here, because if it can't be a vacation home, that's ridiculous. It's ridiculous, gentlemen, lady.
So, maybe what you need to do is propose, uh, amendment to the ordinance to allow vacation rental homes in suburban, suburban residential.
Well, I, I have always held that, um, been right there with that, but, but if you want to.
They already are.
Would you identify yourself?
My name's Rita Chapman, and I'll, I'll stand with Cory. They already are allowed in suburban residential, and they will never be outlawed in suburban residential, because they're always allowed fourteen days, always allowed. You can't take that away. It's going to always exist in suburban residential, and I know as a committee person, I was the, uh, vice chair, the intention was not by the committee as a whole, and I'll say the majority of them, 'cause there were some minorities who believed this, the majority was that the final consensus, they should be allowed under certain conditions in suburban residential. That was the committee's one year of work, research after research after research. Pennington County is one of the only counties in the country where you had to get a conditional use permit, and not just a permit. Everywhere else in, no matter what the population area, when I talked to planning com, uh, director after planning director said, you're gonna require a conditional use permit, we only require a permit. So, this is the most restrictive county in the country, in one of the biggest tourism industry areas.
And, I don't know, it, there has to be a pathway.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Jay?
Maybe take out the word "transfer."
No. Uh, is there somehow spouse-to-spouse, that it say that we have one spouse's name on a piece of property, and I know this is a transfer, but something happens to that spouse and it goes to the spouse, not to the kids, not down the line to grandma and grandpa and two uncles and an aunt, but spouse-to-spouse, is there some way that we could write that in there and make it work?
Basically, what you're talking about is a will, an inheritance, probate, uh, a new deed would be drafted. We could write a definition of transfer to allow, I guess, legally, legally married, uh, transfer from one spouse to the other, uh, through, um, inheritance.
No problem with that.
Something along those lines, I'd have, I'm just kinda brainstorming right now, but, uh, if you wanna leave it just between, um, individuals legally married.
Sure.
Sounds good to me.
Something like that.
So, uh, Ken's daughter, if we decide to share it, um, she's out, she's SOL according to this.
And, unless we broaden the definition further, it would be just.
She said she was on one piece of property already, correct?
Right. She and her husband, long, longstanding in the family.
How about remarriages? How about remarriages, divorces?
I could draft a definition of transfer that would allow everything, uh, under the sun, but it's not my decision to decide, uh, how broad that should be, so.
Well, if you, uh, a few minutes ago, you were talking about, um, legally married. So, your, uh, question, Rita, about second marriages, I mean, if it, it was legally married, wouldn't that fall under his definition?
I'm hoping.
I, I, I guess that's my question, I, if they.
Could, could be.
Yeah. I, I, I guess.
Right now, we're married, I die, and she want, she gets re, uh, first of all, it transfers, uh, to you, um, that's acceptable. You remarry.
It's not acceptable.
That would happen, that's.
Write it so that would be.
That's what would happen with me.
Right.
But maybe.
Maybe, if that.
So, what you're, what you're saying is that any current marriage or any future marriage, any transfer between husband and wife in a current or future marriage is acceptable. Write a definition of transfer that encapsulates that.
Jay, isn't that exactly what I meant by saying spouse-to-spouse?
Yeah.
Didn't make any difference whether it's second spouse or third spouse, spouse-to-spouse, that's what I was thinking.
Okay, if, if something is developed, then it would have to become an amendment to the ordinance, right?
Correct.
There's a timetable connected with that in the process. And, um, in that respect, when, when this ordinance was adopted, everybody clapped their hands and were, were happy, until somebody thought of something else. And so, I'm suggesting, or going to suggest, that we take some time to think of all the other things that you could possibly think of that might apply to keeping what you want. And get it to Jay or Holly, and at some point, stand in front of us and say, okay, this is what we want, and this is what we'll live with. And then we start the process of, of amending it. And maybe you have to hope that nothing happens between now and then.
I volunteer to be a part of that process.
You already are.
But if there's meetings and stuff.
Jay's in charge.
Okay.
And I sympathize with you on the changes and changes, and, um, one thing that I did think about was, uh, a lot of times when some things need to be tweaked a lot, or changed a lot, it maybe means that the initial drafting.
Here it comes. Let's just get rid of all of it, right, Rita?
No, actually, no, actually, I, I actually like a lot of the parts of the, of the ordinance. I think that having the, uh, different restrictions has actually been a good thing. It's been very good to say, okay, ten o'clock, everyone in bed, or quiet in, it's been good to have the standards. That's been a very positive thing, and I've been behind that a hundred percent the whole time. But I was going to say that it means that there's an inequality, or challenges, or, or rights that are, that are challenged, that's when people come back and say, what's wrong with this picture? My rights have been challenged, or it's, something is very unequal. Now, that's, that's what happens when we don't spend enough time looking at all the what-ifs, what-ifs.
And if there's, there are quite a few people that do that, I think you're right, but right now, we have two.
Sure.
Actually, there are more. Actually, there are more than that.
Do you have something you want to say?
Yes, my name is Tally Chapman and I'd like to, uh, address some of the comments that have been made by a number of the commissioners. You know that I've been a part of this from, from the get-go. And excuse my nervousness because it's hard for me to speak. When this whole thing started, there were obvi, there was obviously people in this camp and other people in this camp over here. And there was a lot of argument against vacation, vacation homes. And there was a lot of fear of, of what vacation homes would do to a neighborhood and stuff like that. None of that has materialized. And now that there has been a period of time where they have been in existence, there's im, there's, there's data there that shows that the concerns weren't valid. And that needs to be, I think that that needs to be readdressed. I think that a prudent person, a person that is open to change would look at the real information of how something has affected your decision, which was, which was a good decision. And I, I find it really, really discouraging when I hear a person make a comment, "The only reason that the ordinance was passed in the fashion it was so that eventually they'll see it go away." Not even willing to look at that it hasn't been a problem. And while I could stand up here and give you point after point after point how it's been a positive influence for this county. And I have yet to hear one thing that makes any sense why you're against it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any further comments on this issue? Are we satisfied with where we are?
About as good as we can get. Say about as good as we can get.
Okay. Next item is item 27. Planning and zoning.
Thought we already started planning and zoning.
You've been in it for an hour, huh?
PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department. Today we have three items before you on our consent calendar. Item A, Vacation of Platt VP 1402 for Sugar Land LLC. Staff recommends continuation to the January 20th, 2015 Board of Commissioner meeting. Uh, item B, First Reading and Public Hearing of Rezone 1411. Larry Tuber, Renner and Associates, the agent, and approval is recommended. Item C, Planning Unit Development Review 0604 for James and Janet Mertz. And, uh, staff recommends to continue that to December 20th Board of Commission meeting. Uh, I believe that I should probably say December 20th, 2014, not 2015.
The, um... Next meeting is not the 20th.
Not the 20th?
Yeah.
It's the 16th.
You could be okay with that? Should be Planning Commission, not BOC? I don't think they meet that day. They only meet the 8th.
So the correction on item C is the Planning Commission instead of the Board of Commissioners? Is that correct?
No, that doesn't make any sense.
Doesn't make any sense. Nope. Continue it to the first available meeting in January. Will that work? Sixth.
Okay, so we need to pull item C off the consent agenda to properly amend it. Do we have a motion on items A and B?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to pull item B and there isn't any other way to discuss about it than pulling it, so.
Which item?
B. Okay. So item B and C are both removed from the consent calendar and the others. So all in favor of, uh, do we have a motion on item A?
Um, Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the consent agenda, which consists of item E.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item B.
Mr. Chair, PJ, on item B, uh, I see that it's .815 acres from limited ag to low density. And, um, I'm wondering why that should not go to suburban residential rather than low density. Less than, well, it's right at three quarters of an acre.
I know, I know it's written in the staff report, but I don't know what the intent was from the applicant, so I'll ask Brittany on that.
I do. Brittany Malater, Planning Department. That is actually, the applicant had gone through a plating process with the city of Rapid City because they're in their three mile plating jurisdiction. When they reconfigured the lot lines, there was just a small portion of an existing lot. That is the .815 acres. So there was a lot that had two different zoning distinctions on it. So basically what the .815 is to rezone it into the same zoning as the existing one that would be three acres. So...
So there's a three acre, three acre parcel next door to it that had this low density.
Right, I have a copy of the plat here I can show you.
Can we show it up here?
You got a tax ID?
If that's the case, I'm, don't have a lot of problem, but I would think that since we're rezoning, it might as well go as low as it can because that's what, that's what's at.
Okay. It might also be the desired uses of the property would change then.
Well, I'm wondering that, since we're talking about vacation home rentals, if that's where we weren't headed. Not sure.
Don't know. What was the number?
Oh, it's 9627 Clarkson. It's actually has a small log cabin on the property on the, the three acre parcel. Because it's getting, this, um, was actually created Lot 1R. It was platted through the city of Rapid City, so we wouldn't have seen it. If you look in my drive.
Any other discussion?
This is on Clark, off Clarkson Road?
Mm-hmm.
Right here.
Okay.
So you can see that there's just that small portion right there that's still zoned, limited ag, so they're going to zone that into the parcel.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd make a motion to, uh, pass item B as recommended by the staff.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing on those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Okay, do we have...
On item C, I'd make a motion to, uh, correct the date to continue to from 12/20 to 12/16, uh, 2015. I don't believe that's correct either.
2014.
No, 2014.
The next county...
December 8th, 2014, as the staff report reads.
Oh, so this, it does need to be amended. Okay.
Yeah.
So this...
Staff is...
Let's get our, get it together, so Karen.
It just needs to be continued to the next county commission meeting, which is December 16th, 2014.
Is that your wish?
Yes.
Okay with that, Karen?
Yep.
Somebody making a motion to that effect?
I did, yeah. I don't know.
To amend, amend item C. Is there a second?
Sure, second.
Motion in a second to amend item C, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item C as amended. What, what do you want to do with it?
So...
You have to pass the motion.
Consent calendar? To continue.
Yes.
To continue.
Continuum.
To continue.
Yeah.
It was correct.
Wasn't that on the consent calendar?
I thought that was part of that, but...
Just pulled it.
Was pulled up.
Pulled it because...
To be corrected, we amended it.
This was correct, but this was not.
We, we now have it amended and it is ready to be passed on.
That was part of my motion is to continue and change the dates.
Okay.
And Mr.?
Maybe I did too, but I thought so.
I think we need to do it.
I have to continue the review of plan unit development to the December 16th, 2014 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
You did good.
That's what we want, right?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Okay, item D.
Item D is road construction within a section line, CS 1403. The Robert Family Trust, Robert Taylor Family Trust, Gary Eckert as the agent, is to construct a road within the section line right of way in order to provide access to lots in sections 27, 33, and 34 of Township 1 North, Range 7 East. So if you look, it's basically off Moon Meadows Road here. And they want to improve the road to take access to the quarter section. And currently that's what it looks like now, the access off of Moon Meadows. It's basically a driveway. So they would like to improve it to a 24 inch driving surface, a 24 foot driving surface, excuse me, four inch surface. Um, it is in the Rapid City's three mile plating jurisdiction, so if they do any subdivisions of property in there, they would have to meet their requirements for road improvements. But at this time, the city didn't have any comments and the highway department didn't have any comments on the instruction.
And, and it pretty much is on top there. It, it, does it go down into, you know, we've had some trouble with those roads out in that area.
Right, and that basically is a driveway. I did get a call from a neighbor that was concerned to make sure that they survey it, that they actually built the road on, not on his property, because I guess right now where that road is, isn't necessarily within the section line. Um, but this is being done through an engineering firm and they had stated that it will be surveyed and they would do it towards the county road standards. Um, there is that quarter section to the northeast, trying to see if this works right here, I guess, just north. This isn't working.
Yeah, we're having issues today.
Yeah. So basically that quarter section to the northeast is the section that they need to access or that they would like to access, for future access, right here. I don't know, it doesn't like us today.
Mr. Chair.
I really wanted to...
I'd make a motion to approve, uh, the request to build the road in the section line right of way, uh, CS 14-03 with the conditions set by staff.
There's a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
Okay, the next item is another road construction within a section line right of way, um, CS 1402. Okay. Um, the applicant submitted an application to construct a road in order to provide access to his lot. In addition, the road would be construction within the section lines using road standards provided by the township per the applicant and the road would be approximately one mile in length. So there was some concern with this one because the existing road to, this doesn't work, does it? Do you have a pointer?
Can you guys just point?
Yeah. This existing section right here, this road that leads up to it, basically it's the road between those two properties. But this existing road was constructed in the right of way without a construction permit or approval of the board to construct that road within the right of way? So there is some concern about that. And I did talk to the Kinsley, was the state's attorney's office, and I don't know, please not here, that she had said that we don't really know if there's anything that we could do at this time, except for that they got a construction, they did construction without a construction permit. So, um, I didn't really get any direction as far as what we could do about that. And also the applicant didn't submit any engineered road plans and the location of the section line is in a township. So townships do have specific standards based on codified law and they do require a 20 foot wide gravel surface. So I was recommending approval of this request with 10 conditions, one of them being that they submit, um, engineered road plans prior to commencement of the road.
So I have a...
Sure.
I'm sorry, I, I just don't get this. One of your, um, conditions, number 10.
Okay.
What, what do you, I, I guess I don't get this. If, if the instruction within the section line right of way is reviewed in one year, what are, what are you looking for in one year? If they've built it, what are you going to do with it? I'm trying to figure that out.
The reason that we had put that in there is because there's, right now, there was building permits issued on a road and if you look, um, at the road to be improved, that was the road, and I went to the top of that and didn't go any farther because of where it was, I didn't want to get...
Stuck.
Stuck, yes. So there is some concern whether there's actually roads when we, you know, issue building permits, because there was building permits issued on these, to those two, without these roads being improved. One, and then two, they're addressed off areas.
I guess the question is, what are you going to do? You're going to go out and review that road within a year and...
And if it isn't there, make them...
You're going to have them tear the road out or what?
No, it was just a condition.
I guess I just didn't understand how that, what, what you were going to do within a year with it, I, uh...
Well, and, and one of the reasons too, I put that in there is because they needed to submit road, engineered road plans. So if they constructed it, because we don't normally get out that way a lot to even check to see if the road was put in.
So, so maybe...
I struggled with this one quite a bit because of the...
Maybe just a little different wording, because the way I read it, it's like, okay, they're going to go out and see if they constructed it appropriately in one year. What are they going to do with it if the road's constructed? I mean, I, I didn't quite get what you were supposed to do.
If it was constructed and has access to the properties, we'd be happy. Normally on these, we don't do reviews and to be consistent with all the other permits we do, it's basically staff going out there where they're going to be in the area, reviewing it, making sure the conditions were met and it's done.
Okay.
Because a lot of, we, a lot of times in the past, these haven't been checked up on and nothing is done, nothing's improved like they said they would.
Okay.
Kind of like the previous issue where there was a memo written, we have no idea if it was even approved or anything, so we're trying to keep track of, you know...
Trying to close the loopholes.
Wasn't this also one that last, our last meeting there, you, you had indicated there some of the neighbors were opposed to this?
There is some concern and actually that gentleman is here and I don't know if he wants to speak. I did speak with him for quite some time, so I...
Hi, Mike Lehrkamp, I'm the landowner that this is going to go through and I sit on scenic township board. It's not that I'm against the road, but if it's going to be built, I want it done right. And as the scenic township, we got together and talked and if, if this other part of the road's going to be built, we would ask that a county engineer would oversee it. So it's done right because the existing road got rammed down our throat. Guy just come out and did it and I went over and asked if he had the permits or the construction permit to do it and he said, "Oh yeah, we got all that." And I just took it, took him for his word and then, uh, went to planning and zoning and asked and, and at that time they just shrugged their shoulders.
We don't know.
Nothing they could do. I said, "What do I do, call the sheriff?" And he said, "No, don't go that far." And so I sat back and watched it go through. And as the township, when it got done, this guy that built this road as it's moved on, we had to take the road. I mean, there's no doubt about it and we put gravel on it and we, you know, move, removed the snow and, and, uh, mow it and everything, but this next piece we want to kind of keep on top of.
When this gets completed, it'll be a township road?
Yes.
And you'll get paid from the state for upkeep of township roads?
Right, we'll add it to the existing mileage.
Probably should use some of that money to hire an engineer to make sure it gets done right.
You have county engineers, I would just ask if they would, I mean, we'd pay his wages for, as far as the township, if, if you'd want to go that route. I talked to a couple of them at county and we kind of mulled it over and I said, "Well, I guess, you know, it'd be up to you guys if we could hire him or just have him oversee the thing." We're not road engineers, I mean, we're not registered certified road, road engineers.
I guess our county highway superintendent is not here. I don't know if they could do that or not. It'd be like a reasonable request, especially if they're willing to pay the cost.
We do have some maintenance agreements, um, exchanging roads and things like that for snow removal and whatnot. Worked out pretty well with townships in the past. Do you have any idea, Mike, if, um, the culverts and the drainage is being dealt with properly or...
Well, we could put a map up...
Well, if we could put a map up of the road going north from this road. They've just been mudding through this for the last five years, they own land on both sides, and it's been a sore. But when they go off this bench, they go down in, there's a bog down in the bottom, and it's the old Barney place, and I hate it. And I've had in years past, had to go around that bog, and the section line goes right through it. That's why the, the section line fence is on the east side of that bog. And I'm not sticking sticks in the mud here, but that's why that fence is there. And if they put the section line fence right through that, what do you do? Just like culvert it in there and drive through it, or... To me, if I had a house, I don't know if you can get that picture up, but where the house is even located.
Ah, yeah.
The north piece. Right now, he's coming into, into Section 20. Diagonally in, he's going on his own property and then turning, going to his house. I've rented that pasture for quite a few years before he ever ended up there, but to me, if he just goes to the northeast and gets up on the high ground and goes to his house, you alleviate all that problem. And I, I brought that up to Brittany's attention, and I've talked to Tom about it, but they want to run it down the section line. But you can't stop the section line right-of-way, so... If I was to build a road, like I said, I would put it up on the bench and leave it up on the high ground, it'd blow free of snow. But then it's all on him, and all the maintenance is on him, and now he's wanting to put it in the section line, and...
Mr. Chair? Isn't it illegal to drain a federally designated wetland?
In the spring, when the snow goes off, it, I mean, you can see water standing there, there's no doubt about it. I would like, I would like for Brittany to come out and, and go drive the whole road.
Oh, sure.
But, you know, that never happened.
If I had someone with me.
Then the helicopter after.
I've got a tractor to pull her out. On this, that light-colored strip, I had oats in there that one year, and he was driving through that, and it's sand, and every time the wind blows, it blows out. It's just a bowl now, I don't know where he's going to get filled dirt from. But it filled up with water to where he couldn't even get through that. And what did he do? He just cut a hole through the fence and dumped it out on my oats field and washed it. And what do you do there? Call the sheriff? I mean, it's been a sore, but everybody's got to live somewhere.
As a former sheriff, do you have anything to say?
Those are always tough ones to deal with.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair? I, I guess, I, I mean, I have no problem with the township working with one of our engineers. We've done some things like that before. If, if, I mean, there's a cost probably, but I just think that if we can do that, we should do that, because we have in the past had that sort of thing happen.
Well, and part of your recommendation is that they, that they do get engineered road plans put, put into place.
Yes, and part of that recommendation was in my discussions with Mike, with the issues of the drainage and things. Because without those, typically, it's hard to tell if you're going to make any improvements.
So do we need to add something to your recommendations, that they work with the county highway engineer? Or have those plans reviewed by the county highway? Is that what you're looking for?
Just some oversight, yes. And I might note, in, when he first built the house over there, he had gossier dirt work. Put a bid in on that road, and it was 55,000 bucks, and he didn't want to touch it.
Okay, to get this thing going, I guess I'll throw a motion out, and we'll see where it goes. But I would make the recommendation to approve the request, or I'd make a motion, I should say, to approve the request to construct a road in section line right-of-way, 1402, with, including construction of section line right-of-way to township standards, with the, with the 10 conditions as recommended by Planning Department. In addition, and then add to that, that the engineered plans be reviewed by the county highway department.
Do we have a second?
And, and time paid for by the township?
If there's costs associated with that to the county highway department, that we, we, they, they work out a deal with the township to pay for those costs.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discretion? Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
No, you could probably still go out there and drive through the mud, I suppose, but...
I think that's the reason for the one-year review, is to make sure it's done.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike. I don't have any items from the chair, so we'll go to committee reports. Hearing, Commissioner Davis.
The only thing I have is that this coming Saturday, December 6th, we'll be having a group get-together with Senator Thune's interview team for the kids who are applying for the military academies. This year, we have 10 applicants, nine, nine boys and one girl. Generally, there's a few more girls than that, but it's the only thing I have.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chair.
You've probably heard enough from me today.
Well, I just look forward to more.
I don't know, I'm done.
The only thing was the bats. I brought that forward because I thought we needed to look at it.
Okay. Items from the public. Anyone from the public who wishes to address the commission?
Brenda Whiting. I would just like to take a time to thank all of you for having worked with the coalition the last year and a half. And we did make a little tiny bit of progress in Pier, and we're going to move forward, we're not giving up. And I gave something to Jessica to distribute to each of you, a personal thank you note. I do appreciate that you took the time to at least listen to us and go and work with us. And Nancy, for all your help, and Ken, for hanging in there with us, and all of you. So thank you.
Thanks, Brenda.
Thank you.
If I can help after the 1st of January, just say so.
I shall, thank you.
Any other comments? Yeah.
I'm sorry. I also wanted to include Heidi, or Holly, Jessica, and Jay Alderman for all their work. Jay has been very, very, very helpful, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I'm glad we did a good job for somebody.
Mike? You don't have anything? Anyone else? If not, we need a motion to go into executive session.
Yeah. I, I want an opinion from the State's Attorney as to whether this is appropriate.
Have you seen this?
Executive session material. Would help. I, I have some questions about that.
After you do cookie.
Those cookies are good.
We'll be at ease until Jay has a chance to review that.
Yeah, it's still, shouldn't be unexpected to do anything. Could be an open, open meeting.
Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. This issue has come up over time, and generally speaking, I don't know that there's a real good definition of what amounts to personnel matters, which we all know is one of the exceptions that allows you to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters. I've seen personnel matters of less than a real sensitive nature be discussed because they're involving department personnel and some of the issues that they have with, whatever it be, restructuring, hiring, so forth. Something like this, I, I don't see would have to go to executive session. I don't, I don't know that it necessarily touches upon anything that's overly sensitive or confidential. And of course, as we all know, executive session isn't mandatory. So even if there was something that could clearly go into executive session, you can still make the decision not to do so. So in something like this, I, I guess to ask the, answer the question, could you go into executive session on this? Well, it does involve personnel, so I'm not going to say that it would be illegal. But I certainly don't see anything in what I'm reading here that, that is overly sensitive or confidential. And so you certainly could make that decision not to go into executive session and have the individual who wants to address this, address it right here where I'm standing.
I would question the fact that if, if it's not dealt with in executive session, and I'm not advocating either way, but it would have to be an agenda item for us to take action on it.
That, that would make sense.
So what's your wish?
Well, I'll, I'll make the motion to go into executive session, personnel matter.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Three yes? Two no? Commissioner Davis moved, and Commissioner Holloway seconded, and no one voted against it.
Okay.
We are adjourned.
That was...
That was the executive session.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Come on, say it.
Aye. Is that what you want me to say?
I was looking at Ken.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.